Good morning. Want to welcome all of you to the July 26, 2022, meeting of the Sacramento County Board of Supervisors and want to thank all who've joined us in chambers this morning. I know we have some presentations in a few moments and have some guest speakers as well. And before we do get into the agenda, though, we need to do some business, order of business. And so with that, I'll ask the clerk to please call a roll, establish a quorum, and then she'll make some announcements. We'll do the pledge of allegiance and then we'll get on with the morning's agenda. All right, Flo.
Okay, good morning. Supervisor Serna?
Here.
Kennedy?
Here.
Let me show you where he's at. Okay, and then Desmond?
Here.
Frost?
Here.
Natoli?
Here.
And you have a quorum.
Thank you.
This meeting of the Sacramento County Board of Supervisors is cable cast live on Metro Cable 14, the Local Government Affairs Channel, on the Comcast Consolidated Communications and AT&amp;T U-verse Cable Systems. The meeting is closed caption and is webcast at metro14live.saccounty.gov. Today's meeting will be repeated Friday, July 29 at 6:00 PM on Channel 14. The Board of Supervisors fosters public engagement during the meeting and encourages public participation, civility, and use of courteous language. The Board does not condone the use of profanity, vulgar language, gestures, or other inappropriate behavior, including personal attacks or threats directed towards any meeting participant. In compliance with the directives of the county, state, and Centers for Disease Control and Prevention, the meeting will be livestreamed and open to public attendance pursuant to health and safety guidelines. The practice of social distancing and wearing of face coverings, mask, or shield is recommended for the health and safety of all persons participating in person during the meeting, although it is not required. Seating is limited and available on a first-come, first-served basis. Members of the public will be given three minutes to make a public comment and are limited to making one comment per agenda item or off-agenda matter. Please be mindful of the public comment procedures to avoid being interrupted or disconnected while making your comment. To make a comment in person, please fill out a speaker request form and hand it to staff. The chairperson will open public comments for each agenda item or call for off-agenda matters. When the chairperson calls your name, please come to the podium and make your comment. To make a comment by phone, dial 916-875-2500 and follow the prompts to be placed in queue for a specific agenda item or off-agenda matter. Please refer to the agenda or watch the meeting to follow along to determine when is the best time to call to be placed in queue to make your public comment. Clerk staff will transfer calls into the meeting accordingly. Each agenda item queue will remain open until the public comment period is closed for that specific item. You may be on hold for up to an extended period of time, and your patience is appreciated. You may also send written comments by email to boardclerk@saccounty.gov. Your comments will be routed to the board and filed in the meeting record. If you need an accommodation pursuant to the Americans with Disabilities Act or for medical or other reasons, please see clerk staff for assistance or contact the clerk's office at 916-874-5451 or by email at boardclerk@saccounty.gov. Thank you in advance for your courtesy and understanding of the meeting procedures.
Thank you, Flo, for reading those into the agenda. And again, we certainly encourage participation and appreciate those who are joining with us. We will note that Supervisor Kennedy is, will be in session with us, but will be joining us remotely, so we will be accommodating that throughout the course of today's meeting. All right. With that, if I'd asked Supervisor Desmond, would you please lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
Of course. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, we do have a number of off-agenda speakers. Let me just ask, are any items to be continued from the morning agenda? So if anybody was here, we would know those items are going to be continued on the...
We are dropping item number five, and we're dropping item number 22 from the consent. And for your timed matters, do you want me to just run through that really quick?
If you like to, yes.
So for your morning items, we are good to go. But just in case, for item 60, it is the afternoon item, but just in case, I'd like to go on record that I will be asking the board to continue this to August 23, and then everything else is still status quo.
Okay, and that was noted on the agenda. So for folks who may be tuning in early in the day and think we'll get to item 60, that will be continued this afternoon. But for purposes of this morning, on the consent calendar, we are going to be dropping items 5 and 22. I don't have anybody signed up to speak on those items, but I just wanted to get to that. We'll take those actions in a moment. And there is a correction on the item 49. I know we have a speaker on that, so we will call on that in a little bit. So let's go to our off-agenda items, and we have a number of speakers. And I'll take them in the order that were given here to me. So we have Mr. Harris, Ryan Harris, followed by Dr. Corinne McIntosh, followed by Michael Hearn, I believe, and then Dan Aderholt, a couple others. Ryan?
Hey, good morning.
Good morning, Ms. Harris.
I want to thank those that reached out to me because I was not feeling well at the last meeting due to all this treatment by my government, and Lisa cared enough to reach out. So thank you to those individuals that did call. In the last meeting, I brought up the Department of Human Assistance releasing client information, and I was wondering if you guys had looked into that or notified the people that their information was released? Or should I try to get ahold of those people myself and notify them myself? There's ways to find out if you guys have changed their case numbers and information, just to let you know. Also, in notifying those people, I looked further into some other disciplines that I was received by your county executive here, Ann Edwards. By your county executive here, Ann Edwards, and in her disciplines as well. She did not redact some client information, and now she's controlling much more pertinent information. So this is like a repetitious habit that you guys have, and other individuals have told me that in their disciplines, you guys have given out client information. So, you know, what are you guys going to do to protect the people? Because their information is getting tossed around carelessly. But I'm sure if it was your guys' information with your names, social security numbers, date of births on forms of paper, you guys probably wouldn't want that just handed to whoever and allowed whoever to see it. So maybe you guys should treat this situation the same as if it was, in fact, your information that's being passed around. Also, with Ann Edwards, she was told that she was going to be sued by some other individuals, and her response was, she looks forward to it. Now, I don't know about you guys, but I don't look forward to it because I'm a taxpayer. So if something could be handled without it going to a lawsuit, I would much rather that happen because it's a lot less of an expense. However, in Ann Edwards' own words, she looks forward to it. She looks forward to spending our money carelessly and doing with it as she pleases. And again, going back to Ethan Dye, have you guys looked into why he had to quit working for the Sheriff's Department? Has anybody taken a look at that? I believe he volunteered. However, there was also some things about domestic violence, and maybe that's why he then accused me of being violent, because it was portrayed that took place in himself. Nonetheless, it shocked me that Ann Edwards chose him for that position. She must not have been aware of that because I couldn't foresee someone supporting someone who did such actions to someone that was probably undeserving of it. Again, these are the people that you guys continue to hire and promote and put in more positions of power. So just letting you know that you guys should look into those that you promote. Also, do you know how to find out when the military weapons is scheduled or who I could get to on that?
It will be forthcoming on a future agenda. You're talking about the report back on that.
Yeah.
We can work with the clerk's office, Ryan.
Okay.
And it hasn't yet, I don't think it's been scheduled yet. I know there will be, maybe we answer questions this morning. Do we know when that?
I don't at the moment.
Okay. We will know. If you want to check the clerk's office, give us a little time here.
Yeah, well...
But it's not on this week's agenda, and I don't think it's anticipated for early August.
Yeah, I think it was around November in the last meeting.
Yeah, we have to take action by a certain time, so, but it's a little later, late summer, early fall, I think, Ryan, but we certainly can let you know what the date is, so.
All right, I appreciate that.
Okay, very good. Thank you. Uh-huh, okay. Okay. All right. Dr. Sacco.
Good morning, Chris.
Good morning, Board. I'm Dr. Corinne McIntosh Sacco. My pronouns are she/her. I've been proud to serve on the Sacramento County Mental Health Advisory Board as the District Two Public Interest Representative since May 2021, when I was appointed by Supervisor Kennedy. I currently serve as the Vice Chair of the Board. I'm also, as you know, a licensed psychologist in private practice with 20 years of providing mental health services to Sacramento residents. I'm usually here advocating for policies and budgets on behalf of others, but today I'm here advocating for myself. Since October 2021, I've been the target of direct and continuous personal attacks from a fellow Mental Health Board member, William Cho. This behavior occurs during public meetings of the Sacramento County Mental Health Board, where county staff, system partners, and members of the public are present. His statements contain language constituting personal attacks of my character, harsh criticism of my opinions, and they include repeated insults to my intelligence, my professionalism, and my integrity. Astoundingly and inherently ignorant, incredibly offensive, extremely distasteful and unprofessional, juvenile, a soccer mom, and crazy are just some of the personal attacks that I've received during public Mental Health Board meetings by this member. And unfortunately, I believe it is because of my advocacy for issues related to behavioral health, racial equity, in addition to identifying as a woman, that I've been the target of repeated harassment by Mr. Cho. This member was appointed by you, Supervisor Desmond, and he also worked as a campaign assistant on your election campaign, and I know that both of you have backgrounds in serving in law enforcement. And after two and a half months after being appointed to the Mental Health Board, Mr. Cho publicly shared an essay titled "Perverted Social Justice," in which he describes his contempt for social justice groups and shared his previous experience of being told to leave community spaces or else he'd be forcibly removed. I've attempted to remedy the situation in numerous ways over the past 10 months. I've notified the Mental Health Board Chair. I've consulted with the county council assigned to our board, as well as the county behavioral health director. I've notified my appointing supervisor, who let me know that he has spoken to Mr. Cho's appointing supervisor. A formal complaint was filed with this county's Equal Employment Office in April. I continuously ask for updates on what, if any, action is being taken, and my concerns are not addressed, and Mr. Cho continues to serve on the board. I'm left concerned that the county is exposing one of its unpaid public servants, as well as the people this board serves, to harassment by one of its representatives. I'm also concerned for other county staff and volunteers that may be experiencing anything similar to what I've been subjected to, who aren't able to speak up about it. And some of you, through your knowledge of this behavior and failure to take corrective action, allow it to continue. I believe that Mr. Cho should be removed from serving on the Mental Health Board. I believe that Supervisor Desmond's other appointees need to be evaluated for their appropriateness to serve, and I believe that there should be a commitment by this county to a work in a volunteer environment in which all individuals are treated with respect and dignity, even if having a different opinion, and that unlawful discriminatory practices such as harassment are prohibited. I believe that this county should commit to handling reports of discrimination or harassment by examining them impartially and resolving them promptly in order to avoid this county's tax dollars being used for additional lawsuit settlements and to build the public's trust in the processes of its local government. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Sacco. This is off agenda, but maybe our county council, working with county executive's office, could look into this, certainly working with Supervisor. Again, we make the appointments, the nominations are made, obviously, by members of this board, and I have seen some of the correspondents come back and forth from different parties. But again, Lisa, because this is a sensitive item, I think maybe that, and I know you have county council sits with the Mental Health Board and have for many years, and thank you for that, but if there are issues that need to be addressed timely, I guess that's, I would take that away from certain Dr. Sacco's comments here this morning, so.
Yes, my office is aware of the issues, and we will be conferring with Supervisor Desmond and Kennedy, continue to confer with them regarding the situation.
All right, very good. Yes, Supervisor Serna?
Thank you.
Yeah.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Just want to, without delving too much into the subject because it is off agenda, but Lisa, do you know whether or not there's a statement that's read similar to ours at the beginning of each board meeting about kind of expected ground rules or behavior for meetings?
I'm not sure if there is, but certainly it could be if...
Mr. Serna, if I may, if I may.
No, no, excuse me, excuse me. We're not taking public comments.
It's Supervisor Kennedy.
Oh, I'm sorry. Okay, Mr. Kennedy, go ahead. But Phil's not done yet, or Lisa, so go ahead.
Yeah, I mean, he would know because Supervisor Kennedy attends the meetings.
I didn't know who that voice out of the air was. Go ahead.
How quickly they forget. Yes, Supervisor Serna, thank you for the question. And actually, I'm glad you did ask the question because the Mental Health Board actually goes far above and beyond what even our statement is and talks about protecting the opinions and the rights and treating everybody with dignity. So yes, that is done at every...
Yeah, that was my recollection, having served as the board representative on the Mental Health Board for a number of years. So I don't know if it's, needs to be somehow emphasized or perhaps revisited, but that might be one way to maybe strengthen the common understanding of Mental Health Board members in terms of expectations for behavior.
Okay, thanks. Supervisor Desmond?
And I appreciate that Supervisor Serna bringing that up, and I have, I've spoken to my appointee, Mr. Cho, and the other appointees about that very issue and the importance of doing that. But my appointees, all of them, have my full faith and confidence to serve and continue to serve on that Mental Health Board, and I just want to make that clear today. Thank you.
This is off agenda items, so appreciate the comments of my colleagues, and it sounds like it continues to be something that will be under review, so. Patrick, I just wanted to ask you, so you're the board's appointee. Are you able to make some of those meetings yourself? I know that oftentimes it's difficult, it's on Wednesday evenings, but...
Yes, I do make most of the meetings.
Okay, good. So, I mean, sometimes that helps too with some of the conduct at our meetings, so. All right, very good. Thanks, Dr. Sacco. And next, we have Dan Aderholt, followed by Michael Hearn or Horn, and then Chris...
Horn, like N-E-O-H-O-R-N. H-O-R as in Waldo and E.
Horn?
Yes.
Okay, you're not, but you're after Mr. Aderholt.
I find that you know how to talk.
Okay, very good, Michael. Okay, got it. Sure, Michael. Okay, Dan's first, and then Michael. Thank you.
He sounds like Liza Horn.
Good morning, Dan.
Last meeting, you asked me if I had proof of this happening with the homeless dogs that comes for you and let you know.
Okay.
I sent you guys an email. I don't know if you guys got it yet or not, Desmond?
Just saw it this morning.
Serna?
Yep.
We're really upset about this because Emily Holken told us flat out that there's only room for one dog per mini home or home, at home for the homeless, and that's the whole board supervisor, I said, my micro homes crews and people in micro are going to get homes for their animals and them, and they're not going to take their dogs away. They already promised that. And she says she knows nothing about that and that the only homes can be available are for one dog only. And then we heard from the animal services, Desmond over there by Bradshaw, that they're telling us that their, that Front Street is a privately owned business and that they euthanize dogs is...
A city-run shelter, Dan.
Oh, okay.
Front Street, I don't know, they may have an operator in there, but Front Street is a city-operated, City of Sacramento-operated shelter, as Bradshaw is a county-operated shelter, so.
Well, they're talking about, they're talking about killing off the homeless dogs that are left, that are left over from being only one dog. And Rosie here herself was misled by this, by this team coming out to the river, telling her that she gets to keep her dogs and that she gets, as long as she gets in a shelter, that she gets to go into a home. The homes are not available for her dogs. She has two dogs, and there's only one dog per shelter. And, and we're upset about this because we feel like we've been totally lied to, and all we want is a fair shake with, you know, where they get to keep their dogs in a home, they'll happily leave the American River. They, like I told you guys before, my micro homes crews are working full-time jobs, most of them, and they just can't afford the rent. And they're looking for a way for like Section 8 or, or something like that, Don, Serna, so they can get off, and Desmond, and it's too far, so they gotta get off the American River. We're stuck with this dilemma right now because the law states, this is like, this is like racial profiling against the homeless and everything, because the law states, Sacramento County says you're allowed to have four dogs. That's recess, animal regulations right here, if you want to see that. Four dogs. And that right there, I mean, just because you're homeless, they're allowed to keep up to four dogs? I mean, that's profiling. I mean, to me, that is discriminating as hell against the homeless, and all they want is just to be able to keep their dogs as their children, like we've been here before, Serna. I know you guys don't want to hear this, I feel like I sound like a broken record, but all we want is a fair shake, you guys. I mean, if we have to go to the civil court with this, we will. It's just, we're hoping that, you know, that these people let, stop. And right now, River District on American River Parkway, you know, guys are coming out to homeless this morning, telling the homeless that they can't sleep on the left side of the American River, saying it's owned by River District. I just got, I just confronted them this morning. I caught them cold coming out there in the rain, telling the homeless they have to leave, that they can't be out there. They've been there for 10 years, and now they're telling us it's privately owned by the River District, when I don't see no property signs saying anything about that, and I'd like to know, is there any way we could find out if this is true?
Okay. And I don't think we're aware of that, Dan, but we can certainly, again, ask, inquire about that, so.
Mr. Chair?
Yeah, sure, Phil.
I just want to make sure that Dan understands that Annette Bedsworth, our newly appointed head of animal care, is well aware of your latest concerns that you expressed in your email, Dan, and so you should expect a reply from her directly about some of the concerns you noted here today about the perception or actual, you know, circumstance about dog ownership and how dogs are treated if, you know, found stray and that kind of thing. So in an attempt to make sure you have clarity, you're going to hear from the Animal Care Control Department head.
All right, thank you, Serna. Can I say one more thing?
Sure, yeah, go ahead.
But like you guys know right now, there's approximately 89,000 dogs that the homeless have here in Sacramento. Of the 89,000 dogs, there's 42,000 on American River Parkway, approximately about that much on American River Parkway by itself. By the, by the, by the homeless animals themselves, only being able to keep one dog, which we already promised, you guys already promised, my micro homes crews, they don't have to get rid of dogs. But that right there will leave up to about $89,000 being euthanized, without no owner and stuff. And to me, that's just criminal and evil. I don't know how that can even be put in words, be taken away. So I'm hoping we can stop this, you guys. I'm hoping, Serna, I'm hoping you guys could put a stop to this and that, and like you guys promised, my micro homes crews, they kept homes with their dogs. I hope that stays, stands. Thank you.
Okay, thanks, Dan. Did the lady want to say anything, Dan? Did you?
No.
No, okay, you just, you're getting, okay, as part of the comments. Okay, thanks, Rosie. Thanks, Dan. All right. A couple more off-agenda speakers, and we'll get into our agenda. We have Michael Horn and then Chris Palomo. Good morning, Michael.
Come on in. I'm actually, Mr. Hearn, can you help there to the other side, please? Thank you.
It's okay, take your time there, Michael.
There you go. I'll put it right there. Thank you. It's not going to be too big because you have those two documents, so you might... Oh, no, it's a two-page thing.
Okay, all right. We can get, that's all you can accommodate on there, okay? Maybe you can...
I'm actually, I've been accepted in the honors program at Sacramento City College Amphitheater Capper in Law and Political Science, which you don't see a lot of people who actually, and there are only specific people who could be qualified for that program. So I know the law better than most people do. So I'd be, despite my ADHD, despite my other disability, because I could cite the whole Constitution and the Miranda rights by memory since the age of six, and I will be presenting a case today to prove beyond a reasonable doubt that the abortion laws is considered constitutionally illegal because according to the First Amendment right of religion, more specifically, the Christian religion, it is a violation of religious rights because according to the Christian Holy Bible, Exodus 2013, "One shall not mourn." And abortion, and abortion is killing the unborn and not fully developed baby. So it makes the abortion law violation of the Christian religion. And so by allowing the abortion to happen, the expecting mother is mourning an unborn child or unborn baby. Also, according to California State Penal Code 2738, child endangerment states this, "If a parent or guardian endanger a child, or he or she will receive six months in county jail or year in state and federal prison if death occurs." So by allowing abortion, the parent is endangering the unborn child, which the unborn child dies, which is a clear violation of this state law. According to Executive Order 13045, protection from health and safety risks to children, by allowing abortion, the expecting parent is not protecting the unborn child. In fact, she is not giving the child a choice to live, and she is playing God by choosing who lives and who dies. And according to the Christian religion, God only has that power to choose who lives and who dies, and no one else has authority. Abortion is violation of health, what did we say that? Abortion is in violation of mortal in the fourth degree premeditated mode because there are specific steps to make the abortion become final. Abortion is also violation of mass murder in the fourth degree premeditated mode because there are specific steps for abortion to become final. Abortion, and also, you don't know who's going, what, not many people know, but Albert Einstein, Nikolai Tesla, Bill Gates, Magic Johnson, Magic Johnson, Michael Jordan, they all live with ADHD. And because you don't know what they're going to do with their gifts, or what their gifts may or may not be, you might be killing the next Nikolai Tesla, who could create something that could be your next doctor who killed cancer. So the risk is too high because you don't know what that child could be, a genius or not be a genius, which makes it the accessory mass mortal part because that, that, because if that, a person died of cancer or even the Men's Syndrome because that parent killed that baby, unborn baby, but yet that unborn baby could be a victim that could cure that? See how dangerous and how high of a risk that could be? And that's why, and so actually, the abortion law violates so many laws, and I will reverse psychology. What if Nikolai Tesla's mother had abortion when she was pregnant with Nikolai Tesla? The Tesla coil would not have been created by Nikolai Tesla because Nikolai Tesla would never have been born because of what his mother had done when she was pregnant with him. And same thing with Michael Jordan and everybody else who actually, they tried to kill. Also, abortion is accessory before the crime violation. A person could have prevented that crime by not allowing the expecting mother to abort her pregnancy and accessory after the fact because of, abortion is also violation of accessory after the fact.
Michael, I need you to have you conclude your testimony this morning.
Oh, yeah, which makes it too late to prevent that crime because abortion already had done. So as you can see, how many laws the abortion is violating.
Okay. Thank you, thank you for sharing, Michael. Thank you for your research. Okay. All right. Appreciate you being here this morning. Next, Chris Palomo. Thanks, Michael. Good morning.
I'd first like to thank you for allowing me to speak tonight. My name is Chris Palomo, and I'm a field representative for the NorCal Carpenters Union out of Local 46 here in Sacramento. I'm here today to ask a couple of questions about the local construction projects that have been going on here. We've all seen the devastating effects of the, this recent pandemic has brought to our communities. One thing it has shown us is the importance of healthcare. I would like to know what you guys are going to be doing to make sure that the hard-working men and women who build these local construction projects are provided the healthcare that they so desperately need. There are a lot of irresponsible contractors out there currently building projects here in Sacramento who do not provide their workers healthcare, and they pay them such a low wage that they can barely afford to make ends meet, let alone pay for their own healthcare and the healthcare for their families. I do understand that we are in a housing crisis here in California, and the building of these much-needed mixed-use and housing projects is essential, but as we all know, we're also in a homeless crisis as well. And when you have construction workers out there that are, you know, they're living in their vehicles because they can't afford, you know, to live in the projects that they're building and they're paid such a low wage, we're not helping the homeless crisis at all, we're actually making it worse. Excuse me, it is never, it's a never-ending cycle, and we need to make a change and take steps in the right direction. We are a responsibility to the workers and the community of Sacramento, and by allowing developers to choose bottom-feeding contractors to build these projects, we are doing a disservice to this community and pushing workers' wages and benefits back in time. We should expect better in our great city and show workers that they are a priority and that Sacramento has a higher standard. Projects with no commitments or contractor requirements just adds to the downward pressure on our community and the workers who build it. What you allow is what will continue to happen. to happen. So the next time a project comes before this board, I'd like you to please think of those men and women who are out there working hard, rain or shine, to bring these projects to fruition. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Chris. Thanks for being, your good work as well. Okay. Were there any other off agenda?
We have a couple.
We have some calls, okay, good. All right.
Please transfer the first caller. Hi, caller. Please, caller, would you please mute the meeting in the background and then start with your comments? You have three minutes.
Okay. Hi, PJ Hehim. Hey, everyone. I read a recent B News article about a concerning development on the Mental Health Advisory Board involving a former law enforcement officer engaging in harassing with a fellow member of the board by literally calling her crazy and using misogynist terms of phrase when referring to her. To say nothing of the fact that we need to stop shoehorning law enforcement into every corner of our system, they are not necessary in every single forum, and they definitely should not be at the table when we are referencing an area where they have an outsized influence in the killing of those experiencing mental health episodes. The counting needs thoughtful appointees on their boards and commissions who fit the roles necessary, and can display decorum and respect during interactions with fellow board members, system partners, and members of the public. And as I said, especially when working in a mental health environment where small turns of phrase that may be throwaway lines are hugely impactful and relevant to how those impacted by county decisions can expect to be treated, and go directly to their willingness to trust the county to make informed choices with regards to their mental health. There needs to be a commitment by this board and by all employees of the county to a work and volunteer environment in which all individuals are treated with respect and dignity, even if the person on the board or commission have different opinions, and that awful or discriminatory practices such as harassment are prohibited. This county should commit to handling reports of discrimination or harassment by examining them impartially and resolving them promptly. This has all been regarding board member William Cho. He should be removed from his appointment to the Mental Health Board, and Rich Desmond should do a better job evaluating his appointees for their appropriateness in forums such as this. I would advise that he do the same for all his current employees, to ensure his other employees aren't pulling similar stunts and devaluing their fellow board and commission members. I would think that a supervisor who appointed such a member would be concerned about how this behavior would reflect on him and his leadership. I would hate to think a shared background serving in law enforcement, or this member having served on his appointed supervisor's election campaign, would preclude such critical examination of misbehavior and subsequent correction action taken. It's also not lost on me that when the county was discussing alternatives to 911 is when this person was appointed. This isn't what we want. We do not want law enforcement pushing their biases on others with an eye towards punishment or other discriminatory practices that they have baked into their mindset. All of this has been evidenced by his continuing discriminatory behavior, starting from when he was on the Twin Rivers Police Department and made excuses for those cops wearing shirts which had the message on them, "You raise them, we cage them," to now with the article Ms. Sacco referenced with regard to disdain for social justice and concern for equity issues surrounding races. In addition, numerous county staff at different levels have been made aware of this board member's bullying and harassing behavior, including the stigmatizing language during public meetings, and yet nothing has been done. Do better. Thank you.
Thank you, caller.
Okay, next caller. Hi, caller. Please start with your comments. You have three minutes.
Okay. Thank you for letting me speak today. Dr. Corinne has been the target of harassment, to put in her own words. Unfortunately, I believe it is because of my advocacy for a non-law enforcement response program for behavioral health and quality of life crisis in addition to identifying as a woman, that I have been the target of repeated harassment by a fellow mental health board member. This mental health board member is William Chu, former cop in the title, current cop in the attitude. He stated in the 2022 January board retreat meeting that his purpose for serving on the mental health board was to, quote, "be the voice of reason and to make sure the wellness crisis call center and response program does not get co-opted by social justice rhetoric." Pretty strong words. But if we take a look at his idea of what a co-opted, perverted, corrupted social justice is, it is one in which the people he claims to serve speak out against him, where he can't put his ego aside and serve the people. His tactics are common among the law enforcement culture, where they aren't to be challenged, and any challenge is a threat to them. We look at his LinkedIn posts where he continually states his love for politics, media, PR, but not so much for people. I never see him say how much he loves people, just government, politics, PR. He ends it by saying, this is important, "There are those who cowardly view me as a politically incorrect or socially unpopular liability because of my past professions." Once again, we look at his church of words and what his agenda is. This, the two statements I read before, clearly state and show that his attacks on Dr. Corinne and his PR posts are nothing more than a chance to silence the voices of the people who came together and created the response team in order to fill a gaping monumental black hole in behavioral mental health services. From what I've read and what I've understood and what I've seen from his actions and his words, his motives clearly go against the integrity of that response program and the mental health board. One of a non-law enforcement corps, one focused by mental health professionals who are not from a punitive world, a punishment world like a cop would, who are out for an agenda and not helping the people. Now, none of this that I've just stated even skinned the top of what I was really upset about, when I heard his disgusting and childlike attempts to be subtly, subtly, not so subtly, anti-LGBTQ in his comments about pronouns and not wanting to give them. His words and actions clearly are in direct opposition to those most marginalized and affected by the behavioral mental health system. He is using a tactic long since used by law enforcement, but clearly, his idea of mental health is something far different than those who have come together and said, "We need to change." I'm absolutely disgusted and disheartened by someone who works in mental health myself, to hear the words of Mr. William Chu and see the attacks by him and others who are trying to attack those who want a non-law enforcement-based practice and culture in mental health. I don't know the last time William Chu has been on the ground, but I have. I am in the trenches, like most who call in. And I believe me, if my constituents, the people I serve, heard what he said, it would be disgusting to them like it's disgusting to me. From what I can see, William Chu, if we can go back to where he states that he wants to be the voice of reason, all I see is nothing more than a voice of oppression, something we've seen time and time again from people like him. His mindset, his agenda is far from anyone who should be serving in mental health for the people, especially when it comes to the response team. That is, he has stated his agenda for him. I don't have to mix words. I know in his LinkedIn profile, he likes to say that people make attacks against him and all this other stuff, all this sob story stuff. The proof is in the pudding. He has stated that he wants to be the voice of reason and make sure that the program isn't co-opted by social justice rhetoric. And I have shown today and proved, his idea of bad, corrupted social justice rhetoric is the same ones as those who don't want to be held accountable, like police.
Caller, I need to have you conclude your comments, please.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I'll say once again, William Chu's voice of reason is nothing more than a voice of oppression. Please take immediate action. Thank you.
Thank you, caller. Okay.
Okay, that concludes your public comments.
Okay, so that's our off agenda comments. And those were the only speakers I had, both in chambers and on the phone. So we'll conclude our off agenda comment period and go to our agenda. I know we have some folks here for presentations, so if we have, we have a couple of comments on items on the consent calendar. I want to be mindful of the time for both our presenters here. We have some young folks here. I don't know if they're in school or out of school, but nonetheless, they're here. So we'll, let's go to our consent. Dan, I do have speakers on two items, and then we'll take that up, and then we'll do the first presentation will be to our History Day recipients, award winners.
All right, so I need a couple of actions from the board. For item five, I need a motion to drop. This would have been introducing an ordinance to revise Title II, Chapters 2.61, Sections 2.61.020 through 2.61.040, and Chapter 2.62 of the Sacramento County Code relating to real estate transactions.
Okay.
Second.
Moving second, that we drop item five. Supervisor Kennedy, any questions?
No questions, sir.
Okay, very good. Okay, please vote.
Oh, you know what? I need to do a roll call vote.
Yes, yeah.
Supervisor Serna?
Aye.
Kennedy?
Aye.
Desmond?
Aye.
Natoli?
Aye.
Unanimous vote. I also want to just make a quick announcement about the title correction for appointments. That was item 49. This was for the Sacramento County Employees Retirement Board for Robert Aguayo. So we did amend the agenda to include him. That was just an oversight on our part. Item 22, I need another motion to drop. This is to authorize the Director of the Department of Transportation to execute the on-call grant management services with Drago Vantage in the amount of $250,000, ending on July 31, 2023.
So moved.
Okay, moved and seconded. Don't want anyone to speak on that. I know we did get some written correspondence. If nothing further, then please call the roll.
Serna?
Aye.
Kennedy?
Aye.
Desmond?
Aye.
Frost?
Aye.
Natoli?
Aye.
Unanimous vote.
Okay, so we do have speakers.
That concludes my notes.
Thank you. And we do have speakers on two items. Item number 40, if you'd call that. Mr. Ryan Harris wanted to call in, I believe.
Okay, and I just got a message from staff. Let's see. Yep, we've got one caller on 40. So let me read that into the record, Alma, and then we can transfer Mr. Harris. This is the authority to enter into an agreement with the Council on American Islamic Relations, Sacramento Valley Central, California, up to an amount of $3 million to provide wraparound services to Afghan refugees, effective August 1 through June 30, 2023, with the option of a one-year renewal through June 30, 2024, and to roll over any unused funds to the following fiscal year as funding allows. And if you could transfer the, Mr. Ryan Harris. Okay, please start with your comments. You have three minutes.
Yeah, I'm calling about number 40 and the $3 million for, I don't have the paper in front of me, the Islamic assistance at the Department of Human Assistance. And I just, I don't trust the individual that oversees that department, so allowing them to have access to this amount of funds, given I've worked for him in the past, I just want to make sure that the finances are going to be spent on what they should actually be spent on. And then for it to say that there'll be a rollover of the funds, I think that was in there too. Again, I want to make sure that's spent on what the money's there and who the money's there to help support. I would like to wait out my time, just because I feel that the longer I put that distance in between him getting his hands a hold of that money, the better and safer and more protected it will be.
So he's going to take the three minutes remaining portion in silence is what he's indicated.
Yeah.
Okay.
And again, the silence is to help postpone helping him control those funds, not postpone helping those funds get to the people that need to get to.
Okay, Mr. Harris, I can conclude your time. Thank you.
Thank you. And I hope you thought about what I said.
Okay. All right, Mr. Desmond?
So since we're on item 40, would you like me to have comments on it now or hold off?
Yeah, sure. We called it, yes.
Okay, great. So I had a couple of questions, and I just gave Ethan a heads up there. Thanks, Ethan, coming down to the podium. First of all, I want to thank several people on this. First Supervisor Serna, which I know he was really instrumental in bringing this forward and connecting the Council on American Islamic Relations with the county for these purposes. And since we talked about this, I think, I don't know, it was a few weeks ago, last month or something, and I asked Ethan to reach out to the resettlement agencies. I know what you did. So I want to thank you for that. I want to thank you for your work in just making sure that this contract that we're considering today is really going to have the bandwidth to handle the needs that are out there. And I also had an occasion to talk with Basim Akara from CARE, and it was great, great discussion. And so I'm extremely supportive of this today. One thing I wanted to ask you, Ethan, is I also had a, I've had a lot of discussions over in my short tenure here on the board with code enforcement and the DA's office about a tenant protection education program called Know Your Rights. And I know that's an educational program. I think the DA's office has sponsored before in conjunction with code and law enforcement. And the whole purpose of that program, and Highlands Community Charter is a big part of it as well. The purpose of that program is to make sure that tenants understand their rights and the protections they have against unscrupulous landlords, a lot of times out-of-town landlords, and knowing that a lot of the refugee community is in District 3, in these unincorporated communities, a lot in North Highlands or in Arcade, Foothill Farms. What I just want to ask you, Ethan, is as you go about administering this contract and having the continued conversation with the resettlement agencies and CARE, to bring this up and make sure that that contract would possibly support some more training. I think this kind of training is crucial, because I think some of these landlords, we've seen it, where they take advantage of disadvantaged communities and communities that don't understand their rights. And that certainly applies to our Afghan refugee community. I want to make sure we arm them with an understanding of what their rights are and how they can push back on a landlord that would otherwise take advantage of them. So just wanted to throw that out there, Ethan, and ask that you include that in the discussions.
Good morning, Chair Natoli, members of board, Ethan Dy, Director for the Department of Human Assistance. Absolutely, and this is a great time to bring this up. I have a, also had a call this week with CDSS, or the California Department of Social Services, on their housing program that's been put through the resettlement agencies. And this is something I can also bring up at that time as well, so we can absolutely look at addressing on both fronts.
Okay, thank you.
Great. Any other comments or questions? Oh, Sir, sorry.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So I too just want to take the opportunity, since we had some, we had a speaker, and certainly appreciate Supervisor Desmond's comments and completely support his suggestion. And I too have had multiple occasions to speak with the leadership at CARE and convinced that this is going to be a great partnership and feel very confident that the contract with CARE is going to fulfill the mission that I think we all share on this board and through our executive team, to make sure that Afghan refugees have every opportunity they deserve to succeed here in Sacramento County. So again, just a reference of my strong support for this item. Thank you.
Thank you, Phil. Thank you, Rich. Anything else, Ethan?
No, sir.
Okay. All right. Do we have any other comments on the item, ma'am clerk, on that item, item 40? Okay, okay. All right, then we had one other consent item. We have a speaker on, and that's item 49. If you'd call that, please.
Item 41 is the resolution congratulating Christine Courier upon the occasion.
No, no, item 49, I'm sorry, item 49.
Oh, I'm sorry. Sorry about that. Oh, item 49 are your appointments for the Sacramento County Behavioral Health Youth Advisory Board, for Sacramento County Youth Commission, and the Sacramento County Employees Retirement Board.
Okay, and I believe we have a speaker on the Sacramento County Employees Retirement Board. We have a speaker. So Melinda Guzman, Melinda? Good morning. We did receive your previous correspondence.
And thank you for lowering that. I was born a little shorter than others. Good morning, Mr. Chairman, members of this board. My name is Melinda Guzman, and I've been a proud resident of Sacramento County, District 3, and I am an attorney in Sacramento for the last 34 years. I am a trustee emeritus to two California university systems. I've served as a director for the Federal Home Loan Bank for the last 14 years, and I'm here to support the nomination of Robert Aguayo to serve as a member of the SCERS Board. I am confident that there is no one in Sacramento County, or even probably in California, who is more qualified to serve on this board than Robert Aguayo. He served as the Chief Investment Officer and in other positions for CalPERS. He also was the leading executive for the LA- He also was the leading executive for the LA City Retirement System. A combination of those two is among the largest retirement systems in the United States. So he is more than qualified from a substantive basis to serve in this capacity. He's been a community servant. He's been a volunteer for UC Davis, for the Sacramento Hispanic Chamber of Commerce and for the arts. And he's a business leader. Together with others, he helped found the Golden Pacific Bank, and he served as a member of that Board of Directors with distinction until that board and that bank was acquired by SoFi recently. For purposes of vetting candidates, you should know that to serve on the board of that bank, he would have been vetted numerous times by the Federal Finance Housing Agency. And he was, and he served with distinction. So by virtue of ethics, integrity, substantive knowledge, and a community leader, I urge you to support the nomination and to appoint Robert Aguayo. One last point is that he would bring necessary, if not required, diversity to that board. Many of your employees who benefit from that retirement system are Latino, African-American, Asian, and more. And Mr. Aguayo's perspective, both as a leader in retirement systems, as well as a voice of diversity, can benefit the county and the people it serves. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Melinda. Thanks for your service to our community as well.
Thank you.
Okay, do we have any other speakers on item forty-nine?
No, we have no other comments for your consent matters.
Okay, that, so that brings us to our consent calendar. Any other items Supervisor Desmond, if you wanted to speak to Supervisor Serna? Supervisor Frost? Okay, I had none, so with that then.
Mr. Kennedy.
Yeah, Mr. Kennedy.
No, just to say thank you to the clerk for the amendment to number forty-nine.
Okay. All right, so with that, then no questions or comments? Any other items on the consent calendar? Would entertain a motion?
Move consent.
Okay, so move second to approve the consent calendar. If there's nothing further, then we need to do a voice vote, please.
Yes, please. Serna?
Aye.
Kennedy?
Aye.
Desmond?
Aye.
Frost?
Aye.
Natoli?
Aye.
Unanimous vote.
Okay. And with that, let's go to our presentations and let's do our History Day folks, and then we'll get to our retirement, recognition of our retiree.
All right, so going out of order, we're going to start with item fifty-one. This is the presentation of resolution and recognition of the Sacramento County History Day competition.
Okay, I'm going to invite Dr. Bob LePerey to come to the podium, give us a little bit of background on History Day, and we do have recognition of our student projects. And I'll let Bob give a little background, and I'll come down and join you, Bob, and we'll have the students tell us a little bit about their projects.
Thank you. I'm the coordinator of the special awards for Sacramento County History Day. Sacramento County History Day is a year-long educational program that encourages students to explore local, state, national, and world history. Through the use of libraries, archives, museums, and oral history interviews, students draw on both primary and secondary sources. They analyze and interpret their findings and draw conclusions about their topic's significance in history. Sacramento County History Day is part of the National History Day program, and winners or qualifiers from the county competition, generally Hell and March, progress on to the state competition, and state winners go on to the national competition. All students, grades fourth through twelfth, are eligible and generally apply through their school. Generally, about three hundred students participate. Fourth and fifth grades, and this is primarily in California, compete in a two-dimensional or poster competition. Sixth through twelfth grade consist of a junior and a senior division, and projects can be in one of six categories: papers, exhibits, performances, websites, podcasts, or documentaries. Each year, a theme is selected by National History Day, which the students must follow for their project. The theme this past year was debate and diplomacy in history. The theme for the upcoming year is frontiers in history, people, places, and ideas. Sacramento County has a special awards component where ten to fifteen sponsoring organizations give awards to students for the best projects that follow a topic they specify. Examples would be Sacramento history, medical history, and Chinese history. This program encourages the students to consider projects they otherwise might not think of from their textbooks. The Board of Supervisors' presentations today are part of the special awards component. Sacramento County History Day is organized and hosted by the Sacramento County Office of Education in partnership with the Center for Sacramento History, and I'd like to thank the supervisors for their continued support of History Day. Today, we have two winners for the Board of Supervisors' award, Jovia Low and Arjun Sechardri. Turn it over to you.
Okay. Dr. Bob, would you like the students to come down, introduce their projects, and then at the end of it, I'll have you join me, and we'll make presentations to both of them? So for their, I think they're prepared to come and tell us a little bit about their projects. Why don't we have them come down and tell us about their projects, introduce themselves, and any of the folks that are accompanying them, and then tell us about their two projects, and then we'll recognize you again for your very good work. So, good morning.
Good morning. Thanks for this opportunity. I'm Jovia Low. I'm from Folsom. I go to Vista Dago High School. I'm going to become a junior. This past year, I did History Day. I did a paper on the Espionage Act of 1917. I highlighted the importance of debate and free speech and opposing viewpoints in even delicate times, like during World War I, which was like 1917, when the United States entered the war. I'm really grateful for National History Day and Sacramento County History Day because it's really given me an opportunity to delve into topics that I never would have thought about and actually really go into depth with research, interviewing historians and professors and archivists and people I never would have talked to without the project. And it's a very fulfilling experience for me, so thank you again for this.
Great. Well, thank you, Jovia. Good. Okay, Arjun.
Good morning. So my name is Arjun Sechardri, and I'm going to eighth grade, and I'm from Folsom Middle School. And I did my paper on the debate and diplomacy in the Civil War. And the reason I did this paper was because I really always thought that wars always end by like violence, but now that I know, like diplomacy is the real reason on how a war ends. Also, I'm really thankful for History Day because usually I would never like write a paper or anything like that, but this has really gotten me into writing and stuff like that. Also, I've also had a lot of fun with History Day, as I've been doing it for around four years now. And I've learned a lot of new, with these topics, I've learned a lot. Thank you.
Great. Okay, if you'll stay there at the podium, and I'll have Dr. Bob join me, and we'll make a presentation.
Well, on behalf of the Board of Supervisors and the county of Sacramento, I'm pleased to recognize the two of our rising stars. We've just met them and heard about their projects, and it sounds to me like that not only have they learned a lot through their project, but from the standpoint of history and appreciation of it, that you'll convey that to your fellow students, and certainly will carry that with you throughout your educational career, but obviously into your professional and to your adult lives. And so we're really pleased that you, you've taken the interest and opportunity, because again, it's afforded to young people. And as Dr. Bob said, maybe three hundred students throughout the region participate in a given year out of tens of thousands of students. So just by the fact that you entered the competition makes you a part of a pretty exceptional group, and the fact that you've been selected here this morning to be recognized for your projects is, I think, a recognition of the effort you put forward, and we thank you for sharing and for being here. And I'll invite you to come to the, maybe tell us, I think you both have people with you, so if you want to introduce your family members, and then I'm going to do a presentation today, we'll take some pictures, okay? So tell us who's with you today.
My mom and my sister.
Okay, all right. Good morning, mom and sister. Tell us our names, go ahead.
My mom, Maggie Choi, and yeah, that's it.
Okay, well, good. Well, again, and we want to certainly acknowledge the family members because of the love and support you receive certainly from your parents, but from your siblings and from mothers that obviously, they're very proud of your achievements as well. So, and before I present these, I want to thank Dr. Bob for his ongoing leadership with the County History Day program. I know you've been doing this for longer than you probably, it's very historical, probably goes back many years. But your, I think, willingness to step forward and those that help with the History Day competition is appreciated. I know you've always invited the board over the years, Dr. Bob, to participate, you know, certainly to observe the competition, but look at some of the essays and so forth, and always very pleased with the, with the outcome. So with that, I want to present to Jovia, a resolution from the board, and to Arjun. And these recognize, in brief, certainly the work that you've done and congratulate you and wish you well, signed by all the members of Board of Supervisors approved here this morning. So how about a round of applause for our young students? And if you'd like to join me, I know we've got the supervisor here, Supervisor Kennedy's joined remotely, but if you come down here with Dr. Bob, and if you'd like to.
Family members, come on in. Well, can I have you stand on the other side and then? There we go. Supervisor Serna, I mean Supervisor, my boss, Scooter. Okay, thank you. We can email those to Dr. Bob, and he can share with you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Bob.
Thank you, Dan.
You bet. Thanks, Bob.
Mr. Chair?
Yes, sure. Go ahead.
Yeah, just before the students and Dr. Bob leave, I might suggest a theme for their, their next project, and that is the five decades of public service of Mr. Don Natoli.
I don't think that'll be an award winner. She took that topic out, so anyway, thank you, Phil. Okay, once again, congratulations and thanks to all our History Day winners, as well as the folks that support that. So, okay, with that, then we do have another presentation, so I'll have you call that item. This is our retiree.
Yes, item fifty is the presentation of resolution congratulating Christine Courier upon the occasion of her retirement.
Okay, I think Mr. Dave DeFonte? Yeah, we're going to plot her already? Okay. All right. Dave, you're going to kick this off, and I'll come down and join you, and we'll invite Christine to come to the podium with you as well.
Yeah, tough act to follow, but Dave DeFonte, Deputy County Exec here, to congratulate Christine Courier on her retirement, and we do have a resolution for her that I won't read in its entirety, but I'll pick out a few salient points to highlight. So Christine began her career in 1998 with the Department of Planning Code Enforcement, the Code Enforcement Division as an office assistant, and continued her career in the county with accounting and fiscal services, the county sheriff's office, the Office of Development and Code Services, and now Community Development. She became the chief departmental administrative services for the Department of Community Development in 2019, and has helped all of the divisions within that department since then do all the good work that we do for the public. Christine is very well-known for bringing staff together to celebrate certain events, and is also very well-known for her cooking. And I was exposed to that early on in the planning department when I started here just a few years after she did, so I was a beneficiary of that early on. You know, personally, I would like to thank Christine. She has been just so incredibly helpful to me as I've been trying to get up to speed. She's been incredibly helpful to staff over the years. We're going to very miss, very much miss her, and would like to thank her for her service to the county, the public, and all of her help to staff over the years. So we're going to miss you sorely. I appreciate your help in trying to select your successor. Very big shoes to fill, but she will be sorely missed and has done just an outstanding job for the county. So thank you very much, Christine, and congratulations.
Great, Dave. We'll invite you down, Christine, please.
Good morning. Good to see you. Well, I think Dave said it very well. We're certainly here this morning to recognize Christine Courier for her nearly twenty-five years of service with Sacramento County and certainly her work in a number of different departments. But I think, as Dave spoke to some of her contributions, it's an important recognition of the work that Christine and many like her do throughout the course of any given day, any week, throughout the course of a year, that support many of the programs and services that this county provides to its citizens and to the residents and the people who we encounter along the way. You know, you weren't necessarily on the front counters, but you were there doing a work that was so vitally important to the fiscal, as well as to the administrative actions that are taken and that help departments and certainly the people who are trusted with those additional responsibilities help them in their duties. And so we really appreciate that, Christine, and I think the ability to recognize and congratulate you today is an opportunity to speak to that. But as Dave noted too, that in addition to your good public service, you've been a tremendously appreciated colleague. Obviously, your ability to, you know, bring people together, and you bring, and did that around food, which is a good way to, you know, get people to the table, so to speak. And again, we certainly thank you for, you know, having been a trusted colleague for someone who has cared about their fellow office mates, but also someone who, again, who has taken public service very seriously. And so with that, after your, you know, quarter of a century of services to this county and to its people, you're going to move to retirement, something I'm sure you're looking forward to, and time with family and friends and to do those things that, and it doesn't tell what your leisurely interests are here, and maybe you don't want to disclose that, but we're going to give an opportunity here to tell us what you, you know, what you've appreciated about your public service, but also what you may be looking forward to in retirement. And I guess that's next week, right? Next Wednesday? Yep, so you got, we've got one more week for your good services. So with that, on behalf of the Board of Supervisors and the people of the county and the grateful public, we thank you for your service and wish you well in your retirement, and hope for good health and much happiness and many blessings of yours for you and your family from many years to come. Congratulations to you, Christine.
Thank you.
You don't have to, but we're just on television, so if you want to say something, you know, go ahead. Go ahead, don't be shy.
Just to say thank you. I'm good.
Supervisor Desmond was only kidding. We could have given you twenty minutes if you wanted, so. Anyway, thank you, Christine, and we wish you well. And thank you so much. Okay, with that, then, we do have our next presentation, and I'll let you call the item, please.
Okay, item fifty-two is the Capitol Air Show Special Presentation.
Okay, we have some guests in the audience. I know we have Darcy Brewer, and I think Mr. Terrence McNamara, who's the Board Chair, and they also have Michael Faust and Angela Terry, and maybe others, but I see the four that I called, so. And go ahead, Darcy.
We considered bringing in the entire board, but we thought it would look like an airshow invasion, so we did that. Thank you for having us this morning. We're here to share with you a peek behind the curtain of what we're doing out at Sacramento County's Mather Airport. And instead of just talking, I think we have a video for you, if you don't mind sharing two minutes with us.
Okay, very good.
Okay, very good. All right, we'll kick it off with the video.
The sequel is live. It's super exciting. It's the most rewarding part of what we did today.
Wow, that's a pretty good introduction. Top that, Mr. Naugair.
Yeah, I have to follow the video. So that was a great recap of what happened last year. You know, the prime goal for the airshow is to put on a safe show, and that took on a new meaning last year when we produced our safe and separate airshow in September. So having the 3,000 acres of the wonderful Mather Airport is super helpful when you're trying to keep people a little bit separate. We used 171 acres for our event space, but we limited our capacity to 50%, and we added a third-day option for the first time ever with a drive-in airshow on Friday, we'll call it evening, but it was, the intent of it was to be after school but before dinner. So kind of let people still enjoy it without, and being able to be next to their vehicle instead of having to mix in with a crowd if they weren't yet comfortable doing that. So we did sell out. We had about 75,000 people show up over three days. I think another cool part is that there's a little bit of something for everyone at the California Capital Air Show. So there's stuff for, you know, technology, aviation, but also representing our public service, public safety, military, things of that nature. So very cool. And each year, we honor our past and offer our airshow attendees an opportunity to step back in time and view theatrical tribute performances. The historical event has choreography, customized military reenactors, live music, pyrotechnic, and stirring emotion, as I'm sure you've all been party to in the past. Things that you can't see anywhere else, and trying to meet our mission of inspiring the future of science, technology, engineering, and mathematics.
We are all about inspiring the future. We might make it a little noise for a couple of days, but in the air, on the ground, and throughout the year, we use the power and magic of flight to inspire young people. Through our annual scholarship awards, our internship programs, our mentor programs, and exciting educational youth events, we strive every step of the way to introduce the next generation to aviation, aerospace, and STEM, making it possible for students to explore their future in these career fields. As of May, we have awarded $381,100 in scholarships to 201 stellar students from across the region to attend 36 different educational institutions, prestigious universities such as Yale, and Cornell, and Princeton, and Sac State, and UC Davis. And we hope that this continues to grow. The faces you see on the screen right now, this is what's next for our region. And it's these students' dreams of how they plan to change the world for the better and the career field they hope to accomplish this change in that drives our programming, our speakers, our performers, and our interactive exhibits and displays each year.
So the scholarship program is just one piece of how we inspire the next generation. A lot of people don't know that we actually provide free youth programs throughout the spring for children throughout the region. These hands-on activities happen at Mather Airport. Unfortunately, we've had to take a pause since the pandemic, but these, I will say, we love doing these programs leading into the show. One, it's the time that we get to see the light bulbs go off with these kids. We don't get to see that. And so we've taken a pause, but last year, we took all that energy and put it into the STEM Expo, which was the first time that we did it bigger and better. As you saw in our video, the STEM Expo was a three-day event that started on Friday of the airshow weekend with an Ask Me Anything conference. The lunch hosted nearly 250 students, and we had an esteemed panel of speakers who represented all of STEM careers, but also aviation, including our female demo pilot, Bayo, who flies the F-35. But the point of that conference was to allow girls, this time girls only in '21, to ask those questions of how these women, esteemed women, got to where they are now. What roadblocks did they overcome? The conversation was at their level, at a youth level, where kids could feel comfortable asking those questions. We plan to bring it back this year, bigger and better. We're going to go to 300 students, both boys and girls, focusing on that middle school and high school age. It will kick off with that airshow, with the conference on Friday afternoon, Friday morning, with an esteemed panel of speakers representing not only aviation, but careers throughout STEM. In reading some of the scholarship essays, we've learned that students right now are very much interested in engineering, creating sustainable solutions to a whole host of industries. So we're going to add a lot of that type of representation on the panel. Those 300 students will have a great lunch, have a great conversation with these, with these esteemed speakers, but also get backpacks filled with educational opportunities that they can continue looking into outside of the airshow. And then families of these students will be able to come back and join us for the whole entire weekend of the airshow. And when they come to the airshow on Saturday and Sunday, they're going to be able to take, be a part of behind-the-scenes tours of a variety of assets on the ramp that aren't available to the public. So not only are we taking it from a conversation, we're giving them those hands-on experiences at the airshow. And so it's something that we're very proud of for airshow weekend. Just about a month ago, we brought back, a couple months ago, we brought back Positive Altitude, which is one of our year-round youth programs. We had about 500 students from the region at Mather Airport, climbing through airplanes. Coast Guard was there, had a great lunch with Chick-fil-A, you know, worked with a variety of industries that use drones, robots, to do their work, and it was a great way to begin, lead into airshow weekend.
The California Capital Air Show not only serves as a thrilling and unforgettable civic committee, but also really shines the spotlight on our region. Each year, the airshow draws not only residents from the Sacramento region, but also California residents, national and international visitors as well. The annual economic impact for the California Capital Air Show exceeds $7.1 million for its operations. As a part of that impact, the airshow gives back to the community through charitable contributions and through to other nonprofits. We donate thousands of student tickets per year to Title I schools, youth groups, and clubs. Our working motto is, "Leave no child standing outside the gate." We do this by making sure that there's a pathway for every kid to get a ticket to come inside. We also give back through a revenue-sharing program through our concessions and parking operations. Our giving last year totaled more than $52,000 to 30, go to this next slide, to 30-plus nonprofit organizations in the region. As you can see on the slide, these are many of the nonprofits that we were fortunate enough to be able to partner with and able to provide a contribution to. We plan to share the 2022 airshow details in a minute, but fans may not know that we are currently working on the 2024 airshow, and that 2023 is already ready and set to roll. Here's a bit more you may not have known. We work closely with the Department of Defense and request assets at least two years in advance to successfully build a quality airshow. It's a huge endeavor to build an airshow. Some of the airshow facts you may not know. The airshow parking lot can hold more than 26,800 cars a day. We set up over 90,000 square feet of tenting for the event. We use more than eight miles of safety fencing and over 500 portable restrooms. We cycle tens of thousands of bottles and cans a year and host more than guests from more than 31 states and five countries. But the most important number we can share is a number of 1,300, because that's the average number of volunteers it takes to get this event off the ground each and every year to deliver the safe, unforgettable guest experience that our attendees have come to expect. We simply couldn't do it without them. It'd be nearly impossible for us to accomplish our mission without the dedication of these folks. Many of them have been with us for more than 16 years. The individuals work tirelessly, not just for the weekend of the airshow. Some of them actually help us year-round do all kinds of things it takes. They don't just do it for the cool t-shirt or the sandwich they get at lunch, but they often do it for the backstage pass to something that's both exciting and meaningful to the region. We take every opportunity to show them and the generous airshow sponsors, as well as our loyal ticket holders, our gratitude and support. We want to thank our sponsors. We want to thank the ticket holders and the volunteers of the airshow, because without them, we couldn't do it. We're extraordinarily grateful for their time, dedication, and your continued support of the airshow for this region. I'm honored to say that the 16th Annual California Capital Air Show is cleared for takeoff. The family-friendly festival returns to Mather Airport, featuring a multinational salute commemorating the 75th anniversary of the United States Air Force. We are honored that this important milestone is a unique way through the eyes of other branches and our closest allies, who have trained and served alongside them on a regular basis since 1947. We're excited to share that this year's airshow may be completely different from what you've experienced over the last 15 years. Attendees will experience the world's most talented pilots and capable aircraft, both in the air and on the ground, over the three days, with extensive lists of exhilarating military jet performances, historic and rare priceless aircraft, live music, festival fair, and miles of displays and activities that, when people come and spend time, it really does inspire the next generation. I've seen it through my own kids' eyes. Our fans and families across the region are likely to see aircraft, both on the ground this year and in the air, that you've never seen in an airshow here in Mather. We potentially are going to have some assets that we've never would be able to recruit except for in a year like this. This year, I'm pleased to say we are also bringing back the wildly popular Late Friday Afternoon Drive-In Airshow for September 30th from 3:30 to 7:00. But this year, we're going to add in a fun component of a tailgate. This flying-only family picnic-style event will be followed by our traditional days of open ramp displays on Saturday and Sunday from 9:00 to 5:00 each day. This will include the festival attractions and unique displays on the ground, as well as the flying ones. They'll be joined by the live music, food, and fun that you've come to expect from the California Capital Air Show. We can't wait to see each and every one of you on the ramp later this fall. Thank you very much for your continued support.
Thanks, Michael.
Thanks, Michael. So Michael is one of our 20 board members, all of whom are volunteers. As he mentioned, we have 1,300 volunteers, but it starts with the 20 board members. The two paid staff are a teacher and a pilot who pull this entire operation off, and it's really something. So, you know, we kind of plan ahead in three- to five-year cycles and trying to look beyond where we are today. Think about what's next. In aviation and in space, things are changing rapidly. This is also a great place for employers in our region to come, to show off what they're doing to the youth of the region, and to participate in a great community event. You know, the things that I think we thought were cartoons when we were growing up are starting to happen in real life, and these are great ways to get on the ground floor of that. Angela was talking about our scholarship recipients, and I thought it was super cool. A few years ago, one of our scholarship recipients actually got a job at Mission Control. So when you think about, you know, a youth from our region, starting at the California Capital Air Show, they can really go somewhere amazing based on what we're doing. So as Michael said, we look forward to seeing all of you out there, September 30th to October 2nd. Darcy?
Thank you, guys, for so much time today. But what we've come here to do, besides give you a glimpse behind the curtain of what we're doing, is to deliver a few mementos from the United States Air Force Thunderbirds, the Royal Canadian Air Force Snowbirds, and a little memento signed by every performer last year that was so grateful to fly, signed to you in appreciation of a great show, enthusiastic crowds, unforgettable hospitality that the Sacramento region provided them, and the ease of operating at our massive and beloved airport last year. Mostly to thank you and the County Executive's Office and our Director of Airports that's very much involved in the planning of our educational programming for your support. And we hope that you'll invite us back next year to let you know what we're doing and to seek your feedback on how we can do an even better job with Sacramento County's Mather Airport. We're also happy to answer any questions for you today.
Well, thank you, Darcy, and thanks to all of you who certainly work year-round, but certainly your board and to all the volunteers that contribute in so many ways. It is exciting to certainly hear not only, you know, what happens during the days of the airshow, but also, I think, year-round, and you highlighted that, and I think, you know, what is inspired in young people, but people of all ages, as relates to not just career paths, but to, I think, you know, the memories that, you know, come with those that have served, and certainly to honor those that continue to serve us, whether it's here domestically, locally, and/or certainly internationally. And that's a big, big part of what the airshow, I think, you know, brings forward. Did want to certainly thank Cindy Nichols and our Airport System folks for their work throughout the year, and to the airshow board, to your leadership, and certainly to, you know, to the two ladies who obviously labor in the trenches, you know, day in, day out on this, you know, very, I think, not just worthwhile, but, you know, something that really is embedded, I think, in kind of the heart and soul of our community, certainly with the former military bases, but I think carries on with the legacy of, you know, the displays and the activities, but certainly, I think, inspires folks well into the future. I got some supervisors that would also like to weigh in, and then we'll maybe come down and take a picture with this. I would just note, too, that there's one room certainly on the second floor, and I know Flo Evans has been very helpful in making sure when they redid the room a couple of years ago, the pictures came down and they were in storage, but certainly that I think are views and posters from the years past. And I think they're also elsewhere in the building. I've seen some of the signed copies and certainly as supervisors rotating it out of their chair with the County Executive's Office, and so these are really nice mementos, but I think good recognition of, you know, the talent, as well as the folks that come here from, again, around the globe in some cases to perform, but also are part of the airshow activities. So with that, I'll turn to Supervisor Desmond, then Supervisor Serna, and then we'll get a picture with all of you.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. And thank you all so much for being here today and not disrupting the proceedings, Darcy. But the three, this is, the airshow is exciting. My first one last year as a member of this August body. But the three highlights are really bringing the community together for a terrific event for this region, celebrating our military legacy, you know, as Chair Natoli mentioned, and also inspiring young people, young women especially, to look into STEM careers, and I think that's just terrific. My only question is, I'm told that, you know, the chair, courtesy is extended to the chair every year, and is it true that Chair Natoli will be flying in a fighter jet this year?
No, he's been grounded.
I think the request we got was for him to jump out of an airplane with a parachute on. We'll see what we can do about that.
Better check that chute if that's the case. Might be the end. Oh, okay. All right, Supervisor Serna and Supervisor Frost.
Great. Thank you, Mr. Chair. And I, too, want to extend my sincerest thanks to kind of the stellar team that we've had in place for a number of years now that do such a wonderful job putting on this fantastic airshow. And I almost hesitate to call it just an airshow, because I think it really is so much more, as Supervisor Desmond alluded to. Over the 11 years now that I've been on the sport, I've seen it grow into something much more than just a collection of static exhibits and, you know, flying demonstrations. But it is that educational component that I think is really special and makes the California Capital Air Show, I think, very distinct. California Airshow, I think, very distinct, probably amongst airshows nationwide. So, obviously, very proud that it continues to grow and be a featured event here, not just for the county, but for the entire region every year. And I'm glad we were able to weather the pandemic, and things are, you know, beginning to slowly get back to normal. And I can't think of a better way to kind of celebrate getting back to normal, more than, you know, participating and enjoying the California Capital Airshow. So, thank you all.
You've gotten some pretty good photos over the years, too. I know that you're pretty skilled behind the camera.
I've also had a ride in a P-51, too.
Photographer. Well, I just want to thank your board for bringing this amazing, spectacular event to our region. I love the way you not only connect the history of avionics, but the future. And when you said cartoons, I connected the dots in one of those airshows around the Jetsons and some other things that, in my past, I never thought that would become possible. So, it's exciting, and I'm looking forward to what you're bringing this year. You seem to bring the stealth, the most talented people in the world to come fly here. It's amazing. Thank you so much for all that you do, and I'm looking forward to it.
Great. Okay, well, let's do the photo opportunity here. So, we'll come down if you'll join us, and invite the board members to come down as well, and we can... And if you'd like to join us as well. Patrick, you have to do it virtually. Sorry.
We have a photo. Patrick, please.
We have a face.
Do you want to stop?
We have a lounge room dedicated to picture.
So do we.
Okay, ladies, get your stuff forward. I feel like I'm on American Idol. All the ladies
right. Well, again, once again, thanks to our Capital Airshow presenters. I know they've
step forward. I can't see you. And Cindy, can you stand next to Supervisor?
left the chambers, but again, reminding folks, September 30th through October 2nd of this
Sure.
Yes, Squish.
year, a grand celebration planned, and certainly would invite you to go to their website to
Thank you so much.
learn more. So, anyway, thanks again for their... And I do think it would be a good
We can put it right behind the fan.
idea, maybe to schedule this for annual presentation. So, it won't be my duty next year, but we
We'll hold behind the camera.
have Vice Chair being here, and so will my colleagues, and so I think we welcome them
Thank you, everyone. Have a great day.
back year after year. I think it's a good opportunity to do a recap, but also then to talk about our students and about, you know, some of the activities that go on that really do leave a legacy with this community. So, all right. With that, we'll go to our, back to our agenda then.
Yeah, you have a series of public hearings, items 53 through 59. I'll read each, 58. I'll read each of those into the record, and we do have to take separate action, but I want to put that on the record so you guys understand. So, for item 53, this is the hearing to lien delinquent solid waste service charges and adoption of resolution ordering delinquent solid waste service charges be collected on the property tax roll.
Okay. Mr. Lamera?
Yes, and as Flo had stated, these next six items are hearings for transferring various charges and tax to the property tax roll. Item number 53 is to transfer the solid waste, the delinquent solid waste charges to the property tax roll. As in every year, when we come to the board, the number of accounts and the amounts will tend to reduce down as we get to our process to actually run the transfer to the property tax roll. Currently, or I should say, as of yesterday, the number of solid waste accounts was 6,206 items. The amount was $2,775,254, and we're requesting that those items be moved to the property tax roll.
Okay. We'll get a open to public hearing on this then. Public hearing is open. Do we have any callers? Anybody in chambers?
We do not have any callers, and I don't think we have anyone in chambers.
Okay. I don't see any member of the board. Supervisor Serna, yes.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chair. If there's no questions, comments by my colleagues, I'd like to move the item.
Okay. We have a motion. Move in the seconded, and we will close the public hearing. And just by way of information, so you moved these to the tax roll, but you said as of yesterday. So, if folks clear this before August 1st, they don't go on the tax roll?
It's actually August 27th.
Oh, August 27th. So, there's still an opportunity between now and then to clear the matters, and those would not go on the lien. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay, good. All right. Supervisor Kennedy, any questions?
No, sir.
Okay, very good. All right. Then, if the clerk would call the roll, please.
Serna?
Aye.
Kennedy?
Aye.
Desmond?
Aye.
Frost?
Aye.
Natoli?
Aye.
Unanimous vote. Item 54 is the hearing to lien delinquent storm drainage service charges and adoption of resolution ordering the delinquent storm drainage service charges be collected on the property tax roll.
Okay. Mr. Lamera?
The current number of accounts is 6,323, and the amount is $531,525, and we're requesting those to be moved to the property tax roll.
Okay. We'll get a open to public hearing on this then. Public hearing is open. Do we have any callers? Anybody in chambers?
We do not have any callers, and I don't think we have anyone in chambers.
Okay. I don't see any member of the board. Supervisor Serna, yes.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chair. If there's no questions, comments by my colleagues, I'd like to move the item.
Okay. We have a motion. Move in the seconded, and we will close the public hearing. And just by way of information, so you moved these to the tax roll, but you said as of yesterday. So, if folks clear this before August 1st, they don't go on the tax roll?
It's actually August 27th.
Oh, August 27th. So, there's still an opportunity between now and then to clear the matters, and those would not go on the lien. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay, good. All right. Supervisor Kennedy, any questions?
No, sir.
Okay, very good. All right. Then, if the clerk would call the roll, please.
Serna?
Aye.
Kennedy?
Aye.
Desmond?
Aye.
Frost?
Aye.
Natoli?
Aye.
Unanimous vote. Item 54 is the hearing to lien delinquent storm drainage service charges and adoption of resolution ordering the delinquent storm drainage service charges be collected on the property tax roll.
Okay. Mr. Lamera?
The current number of accounts is 6,323, and the amount is $531,525, and we're requesting those to be moved to the property tax roll.
Okay. I'll open a public hearing on this. Do we have any, if no one signed up to speak, do we have any callers? All right. With that, we have no callers and no one signed up in chambers. I'll close the public hearing, bring it back to the board. Supervisor Serna?
If there's no questions or comments by my colleagues, I'd like to move the item.
Second.
All right. Seeing no questions, hearing no comments, then please call the roll, Madam Clerk.
Serna?
Aye.
Kennedy?
Aye.
Desmond?
Aye.
Frost?
Aye.
Natoli?
Aye.
Unanimous vote.
Okay, next item.
All right. Item 55 is the hearing to lien delinquent storm drainage service charges for the city of Citrus Heights and adoption of resolution ordering delinquent storm drainage service charges be collected on the property tax roll.
Okay. Ben?
There are 984 items, and there is, oops, $79,927 currently delinquent.
Okay. All right. And I will open public hearing. I don't have anyone signed up to speak in chambers. Is there anyone on the phone for item 55?
No public comments.
Okay. With that, I'll close the public hearing, bring it back to the board. Supervisor Serna?
If there's no questions or comments by my colleagues, I'd like to move the item.
Second.
Okay. It's been moved in the seconded then to approve the item. If there's nothing further, any comments or questions by board members, then Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Serna?
Aye.
Kennedy?
Aye.
Desmond?
Aye.
Frost?
Aye.
Natoli?
Aye.
Unanimous vote. On to item 56. This is the hearing to lien delinquent storm drainage service charges for the city of Rancho Cordova and adoption of resolution ordering delinquent storm drainage service charges be collected on the property tax roll.
We currently have 734 accounts and 64,909 outstanding.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Lamera. Open to public hearing. No one signed up to speak in chambers. Is there anyone on the phone?
No one on the phone.
Okay. This is going to be a pattern here. Okay. I'll close the public hearing. Supervisor Serna?
If there are no questions or comments by my colleagues, I'd like to move the item.
Okay. I see no questions or hearing no comments. Clerk, please call the roll.
Serna?
Aye.
Kennedy?
Aye.
Desmond?
Aye.
Frost?
Aye.
Natoli?
Aye.
Unanimous vote.
Okay, next item.
All right. Item 57 is the hearing to lien delinquent utility taxes and adoption of resolution ordering delinquent utility taxes be collected on the property tax roll.
Okay. Mr. Lamera?
Number of accounts is 9,370. Dollar amounts 148,332 outstanding.
All right. Thank you. We'll open the public hearing. No one in chambers signed up on item 57. Any callers?
No callers.
All right. No callers on item 57, and we'll close the public hearing. Go to Mr. Serna.
Mr. Chair, if there are no comments or questions by my colleagues, I'd like to move the item.
Second.
Okay. It's been moved in the seconded, and I see no comments or questions by members of the board. With that, then, Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Serna?
Aye.
Kennedy?
Aye.
Desmond?
Aye.
Frost?
Aye.
Natoli?
Aye.
Unanimous vote.
Okay.
And then the final public hearing on the taxes, on service charges, is item 58, hearing to lien delinquent water use service charges and adoption of resolution ordering delinquent utility water use service charges be collected on the property tax roll.
Okay. Mr. Lamera?
And this one, you're acting as the Sacramento County Water Agency Board?
Thank you, Ben.
Sorry. That's okay. And we currently have 1,823 accounts outstanding, and the amount is $1,558,056.
Okay. I will open a public hearing. See no one in chambers signed up on this item?
No callers.
And we have no callers. So, I'll close public hearing. Go to Mr. Serna.
If there are no questions or comments by my colleagues, I'd like to move the item.
Second.
Okay. It's been moved in the seconded to approve the item. I'll just note, from the time the staff report was prepared to this moment, nearly 1,000 of those accounts got cleared, because the staff reports said 2,041, you just said 1,000 and something. So...
Yeah, 1,820.
Yeah. So, just in between time, you've just narrowed by nearly half. So...
It keeps reducing.
Yeah. Okay. Very good. All right. Mr. Serna, we got a motion in the second, and please call the roll.
Serna?
Aye.
Kennedy?
Aye.
Desmond?
Aye.
Frost?
Aye.
Natoli?
Aye.
Unanimous vote.
Okay, Ben. I guess your work's done for this morning. So...
Thank you.
Thank you. All right. We'll go to our next item.
Okay. Item 59 is the proposed Arden Arcade Property and Business Improvement District. Public hearing to establish the district and levy assessments continue to the afternoon of July 26th. To tabulate assessment ballots and take final actions to establish the district and levy assessments for fiscal year 2022-23, the environmental determination is exempt. And I want to call out that the board letter states that you'll return at 2, but for today, we're returning at 3:00.
Okay. So, just a note for anybody watching this, that once we're done the public hearing this morning, we'll come back at 3:00 this afternoon. So, all right. With that, Cheyenne, good morning.
Good morning, Chair Natoli, members of the board. I'm Cheyenne Raymond with the County Engineering Division. Property and Business Improvement Districts, also known as P-Bids, provide services which enhance the economic vitality of properties within the district. Currently, the county administers five P-Bids, and today's item is to establish a sixth P-Bid, known as the Arden Arcade P-Bid. The location of this district is generally along the business corridor of Arden Way between Ethan Way and Watt Avenue and Howe Avenue from Wydaway to just south of Hurley Way. The district is comprised of 254 properties, of which are represented by 157 property owners. In the first year of operation, the proposed P-Bid is anticipated to receive $557,726 in assessments to provide for the Clean and Safe Program, marketing, communications, capital improvements, and administrative costs. On June 7th, this board adopted a resolution of intention to form the district based on petitions that were received in excess of 50% of the total assessment. It's also important to note that the petition drive began in March of 2020, but however, due to the circumstances of the pandemic, the petition drive was put on hold in December of 2020. Property owners expressed earlier this year that we revisit the petition drive, which was reopened in April of 2022. The resolution of intention set today as the date, time, and place of the public hearing. Notices and ballots were sent to the 157 property owners, of which we have received 51 ballots as of this morning. Staff recommends that the board open the public hearing to consider all oral and written testimony, close the public hearing, and adopt the first two recommended actions, which are to recognize the exempt status for the project according to SEQA, and to direct the manager of special districts to tabulate the ballot, return at 3:00 p.m. with the results from the tabulation, and further recommendations for the board at that time. That concludes my presentation. In addition to county staff, we also have Civitas, which is the financial consultant that help prepare the formation reports. That's Kelly Rankin, who's on the phone, and Emily Brown, who's in chambers.
Okay. All right. Thanks to Kelly and to Emily for being here, being available. So, let me go to board members for questions initially here, and then we will open the public hearing. So, any questions? Supervisor Desmond?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and thank you, Cheyenne. I'm very happy that we are considering this today and continuing to discuss it. I'm a big fan of the P-Bids, particularly in the unincorporated area. I mean, I think they have really done a great job, frankly, filling a bit of a void that we see in the unincorporated areas in terms of the county not being set up to provide municipal services as, I think, efficiently and as timely as an incorporated area. So, you know, unfortunately, it's kind of born, I think, out of some of that frustration. But I know there was a lot of, this effort was picking up steam before the pandemic, and I think it'll be a really great thing for the small businesses in that area and the community in that area along Arden Way. So, thank you.
Okay. Thanks, Supervisor Desmond. Supervisor Kennedy, anything on the phone?
None, other than I would echo Mr. Desmond's comment.
Okay, very good. Okay. So, seeing no other comments, thanks, Supervisor Desmond, for your comments. We'll go ahead and open the public hearing at this point. I know we did receive some written correspondence, and we may have someone on, I don't have anybody signed up in chambers, but... So, the public hearing is open, and I'll turn to our clerk.
Okay. So, we did receive a request from Mr. Tully to read his public comment into the record. We made several attempts to see if he could make the comment on his own, but we were unable to reach him. So, "Dear County Board of Supervisors, I am writing you today to comment on the proposed P-Bid for Arden Arcade. I am the local owner and operator of one of the six apartment complexes included in the proposed P-Bid district assessment. Yes, only six apartments total, but we probably comprise some of the highest square-foot rates. Our complex is on Arden Way and backs up to residential neighborhood off of Gannon Drive. We have worked very hard to improve our neck of Arden, all while providing good housing at a fair cost. I agree that private-public partnerships are needed when public resources are unable to respond, but one must consider the type of business and what each does for the community. We provide the housing for the people of Arden, the workers, the office help, the students. We are Arden. I am writing to ask that the board reconsider its position on residential housing providers in this P-Bid. I was surprised to see that apartment complexes were included in this P-Bid assessment near rates equal to retail businesses, yet unfairly by square footage. Businesses who potentially have a much higher profit margin from a smaller square footprint than those of us who provide affordable housing. Sacramento has a large homeless problem greater than San Francisco, yet you are piling on more cost. I believe your treatment of apartment complex assessment is unfair and potentially discriminatory for the following reasons. One, California apartment complexes in this area are all under rent control. All are old enough. We are unable to absorb additional assessments and taxes imposed on us post-rent control. Your assessment is unfair, as fast food and commercial operations do not have financial restrictions on what they can charge and how much they raise their rates. Currently, inflation is almost 9% and 10% is the cap. No apartment complex can raise rates by 9% and keep people housed. Our current raises are losing money over the last year. Ignoring new complexes, which are not under rent control, older apartments have rent drop over last year. You are proposing this at the worst possible time. Two, assessment by square footage is biased and unfair. Apartment complexes are significantly bigger... are significantly bigger in square footage, because we provide recreational areas, pools, and parking. That does not equate to bigger businesses. Our rate is almost the same as that of commercial and fast food operations, but they are much smaller. You cannot equate a larger box container store with a 1964 apartment complex, because they have similar square footage, very different. The local Jack in the Box could fit in our community pool. Does Starbucks have a pool or a recreational lawn for kids to play? Your P-Bid budget is primarily for security based on the budget. We already have invested in staffing, gates, fences, and camera systems, primarily to deal with homeless and drug users trying to get into the complex, a problem the county claims is from not having enough housing, a cost you are now trying to raise. We provide residential housing. We are not public businesses and should be treated no different than that of a person's house. You are not assessing the houses of the people who live near this P-Bid, nor the rich parts of the town that frequent the Arden Arcade. Additional objections? Five, I would also like to acknowledge that the county's ballot included a self-addressed envelope to use for voting. This envelope was totally see-through and was not an adequate privacy ballot for voting. One could see which way a person votes without even opening the ballot. The vote checkbox was in red, easily seen from a closed envelope. This brings into question fairness of vote counting or pre-sorting, a fair question, given the oddly drawn-up district. The Sacramento Fire District is a public agency, which we currently are required to pay fees to. I find it a conflict of interest that any public agency that we pay fees to gets to vote to raise an assessment against us. Justification that they own land paid by our tax dollars to vote against us is a clear conflict of interest. Government should not get to vote for the reduction of government responsibility at our cost. This is inherently unfair. Seven, public and nonprofit and utilities all pay a lower assessment fee under this P-Bid, yet they already pay no property taxes. Again, this is unfair. We pay property taxes, yet you have the groups that don't pay property taxes paying less. Nonprofit and government agencies should not have to vote to essentially raise my fees. Eight, we are already taxed for the services the P-Bid is supposed to provide. We pay property taxes, which are allocated to all the services the P-Bid is supposed to provide. Nine, the border for the P-Bid is arbitrary and seems to be drawn without rhyme or reason, perhaps to garner vote. The border goes beyond Arden Way and goes south of Fulton, yet excludes all the houses and any other businesses along the corner, odd at best. Ten, we were given no prior notice to discuss this with the County Board of Supervisors. The county claims this was initiated by a coalition of property owners. Myself nor my tenants received notice. We received no notice from a coalition of property owners. Who, when was this open to public comment? In conclusion, you are essentially trying to have the hard-working apartment residents of Arden Arcade pay for improvements and help much larger corporate businesses at a disproportionate rate, all while complaining about the lack of affordable housing. Residential providers should not have to foot the bill for McDonald's, Starbucks, and Nordstrom's rack to improve their cleanliness and security. They should pay for it on their own. Please reconsider the inclusion of residential housing providers in this P-Bid assessment. It's unfair. Patrick Tully, President of Arden Town Apartment, Bitwise Properties, Incorporated.
Okay, any other comments, Madam Clerk?
No other comments.
Okay, thank you for reading that into the record, and thank you, Mr. Tully, for your comments. I'll turn to Supervisor Desmond, who?
Thank you, Ms. Chair. I'd like, Cheyenne, I had not heard from this property owner, and I just checked with my office. Can you describe a little bit of the public outreach to the property owners throughout this process?
Yeah, thank you for your question. So, the outreach is conducted by three primary sources. One, the property owners within the district, Civitas, which is the consultant assisting with the development of the district, and county staff from Economic Development, and I believe your office Supervisor Desmond. So Civitas is here, and I did indicate to them prior that this question may arise, and Kelly Rankin may provide the best description of the public outreach component.
Okay, Ms. Rankin, you're on the phone?
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes, go ahead.
Good afternoon. So, as Cheyenne said, the initial outreach began in March of 2020. We had a group of approximately 15 property owners that were interested in the district formation. So we went through the list of the proposed property owners that would be in the district and essentially assigned homework tasks. So all the property owners that were on our steering committee, they reached out to their assigned property owners or anybody that they had existing relationships with. And about May of 2020 is when we halted the process and restarted it in April of 2022, where we regan the process. So, kind of double-dipped into everybody that we'd already reached out to, and I believe, you know, we're at the mercy of the contact information that is available to us. So we would go to the Secretary of State and any information that the county assessor had on file in order to get in contact with these folks. So it consisted of outreach emails and personal phone calls, and I believe this property owner that reached out, we were not able to locate property and contact information for him, but there was an attempt to locate it and get in touch with him.
Just a question, Supervisor, still on the floor. So you did not make any personal contact with this property owner?
Not myself personally, and I don't believe anybody else in the steering committee was able to.
Okay, I didn't mean you personally, but I meant to the process you were utilizing, you said you weren't able to identify information, so there was no phone contact or email contact. Basically, you just got the public notice. Is that accurate?
Correct.
Okay. Supervisor Desmond, back you.
Okay, thank you. I appreciate that. Staff has told me that the previous owner of the apartment complex had been contacted during some prior events or prior efforts from a few years ago. Just a comment I'd like to make. I certainly appreciate the property owner's concern. Something I would just mention that I think we've seen in the context of other P-Bids is that, you know, the whole idea of this is to bring, to really pool the resources of the commercial property owners in the area, so that some businesses, including apartment complex owners, can decrease some of the direct expenses they pay for some of these services. And that is a benefit that we've seen in other parts of the county, certainly in District 3, and also by pooling some of the resources, especially in terms of the Clean and Safe Program for security and trash pickup, that it really is a big benefit that it brings to not only the small businesses, the commercial businesses, but also the apartment complexes in the area. And I'm confident that a P-Bid in this area would accomplish the same thing and really result in a net benefit to this property owner as well.
Okay. I had a couple of questions. With the map that was put forward here, the detail is pretty high-level, but if you look down Howe Avenue, about where Hallmark Drive intersects, it's kind of an odd configuration with the blue there. So you just picked out buildings? It does exclude parking lots, or what is that? That, you've got gray mixed with blue there, and again, there's no level of detail enough here for me to know besides what was stated in the text as to properties and how they might be assessed. So could somebody tell me what's going on there?
So I'll make an attempt to describe that, and then we can refer back to Kelly to provide more detail. So, the P-Bids, residential properties are not assessed, and so what you're seeing is...
Single-family residential.
Thank you, Supervisor Tully. Single-family residential properties are not assessed. And so what you're seeing is an attempt to represent the ownership who is interested in forming the P-Bid, and the contiguous nature that they're trying to draw the boundary along to sort of bring everyone together under this common interest. And now, I'll go ahead and refer to Kelly if she has anywhere she'd like to add.
Well, if you pull the map up, Cheyenne, maybe you know what I'm talking about or not, but there's just, you've got these little thin strips of blue interspersed with gray, and I guess I'm just curious as to either, are those separate properties, commercially, or is this a specific question, not so much the general aspect, which you just said?
Post-supervisors, Dorothy Caddani with the special district session. Hello. Are you specifically referring to the portion on Howe Avenue that, like you said, it looks like little strips?
Yes, right across from Hallmark Drive there, so it'd be on the east side of Howe.
Yes.
Yeah, so what's happening there? I don't...
Actually, Kelly, are you able to address those specific questions, or Emily?
Sure. So all of the gray area represents non-assessed parcels, and if memory serves, the bottom parcels on the far, the west side, they had expressed interest throughout the formation process. So, we had the original blue up there, and then as we were doing outreach, more property owners started to learn of the effort, and they wanted to be included, so we included them in the boundary.
You're still not getting to my question. Maybe I'm not being clear. I'm asking, on the east side of Howe Avenue, directly across from a Hallmark intersection, you have interspersed gray and blue. I get it, people want to be in fine in the blue. You probably included some folks that may not want to be in, because, again, you're trying to have logical boundaries. I understand all that, Kelly and Cheyenne, but I'm asking specifically, what happened there? And are those parking lots? Are they residential mixed in with commercial? What is that?
I understand. So, we learned that that was something noted as a common area, and it's not an area recognized by the county assessor. So it's almost like a vacant space, if you will, but there's no property owner attached or APN attached to that gray area surrounding the smaller blue parcels.
So, common area, in what sense? Is that a park?
It's a common area shared by those parcels altogether, is my understanding.
And that's an apartment complex or a commercial complex?
I believe it's apartment, but I can look more specifically if you give me one moment.
Okay, because maybe it speaks to some of the information that was put forward in the letter that was read into the record, because he talked about common areas, pools and such, and how they were being treated. So that's an apartment complex. Again, I'm just not familiar with that section of Howe Avenue. Maybe you can pull it up on Google, and maybe Supervisor Desmond's familiar with it. Okay.
Mr. Chair?
Yeah.
Did you see Supervisor Patrick?
Oh, I'm sorry, okay. Oh, yeah, Patrick has his hand up too? Okay, sure.
Just wanted to make sure.
Yeah, that's good. So Patrick, just give me a second. I'll call on you, see if you can, you want to keep looking at that and come back?
Yep, I'm looking at it right now.
Okay, so we'll take Supervisor Kennedy's comments while you're looking up. Kelly, go ahead. Supervisor Kennedy, go ahead.
Thank you, Chair, and thank you, Supervisor Serna. Excuse me. I just wanted to address the concerns of the property owner that called in, and, you know, there's a lot of legitimate concerns, but, you know, the experience in District 2, where the Mack Road partnership is, which is probably the most, the biggest mix of residences, multifamilies to speak of, and businesses of any P-Bid, and there was similar pushback at one time, and the experience has shown that, you know, there's a recognition that when you have that mix of residential and business within a P-Bid area, that the business district is only as successful as the neighbors who live there, and the neighbors who live there are only as successful as the P-Bid that surrounds them. So, I understand the concerns, but I'm a firm believer that the P-Bids, while they are called business districts, they do benefit the residents that live in that area a great deal. Thank you, sir.
Good. Thank you, Patrick. Good comments. Okay, back to Kelly. Have you been able to discern that?
So it looks like it's a small business park, several offices, and then that would be a parking lot.
Okay, so parking lots, those other commercial properties are included in the blue, all up and down Howe Avenue and along Arden Way. Those businesses, you know, all have parking lots, but do you exclude the parking lot for this commercial, for those commercial properties? Again...
It's because there was no property owner or APN. It's almost like it didn't exist to the county assessor, that gray area.
That's not possible, to not have an APN, or at least not to have some parcel, whether it's taxable or not. I mean, it exists on the ground, so I don't get it.
That's the information I got from our data specialist, so that's the best information I have.
Okay, again, I'm not challenging your database or you. I just, again, it's odd, and I think, again, from what you've explained, it might go to an equity situation, because the other property owners are being assessed for their parking lots and/or common areas, and just because it's a shared common area doesn't mean somebody doesn't own it, or maybe it's in joint common ownership. And I know this is a public hearing, you come a long ways with this, so I'm not looking, again, I'm supportive of P-Bids as well, but I just found it odd. You've answered my question, and I guess maybe between now and 3 o'clock, somebody needs to go back and take a look at that, or maybe you can look at this morning, so. Dorothy?
We can confirm, but actually, when we compare the document drawn up by Civitas and the boundary map that we have, we actually don't have the different delineation of the parcels. They're actually shown as contiguous on our map, and so it may just be a difference as far as how the different parcels are drawn, because we're actually showing them as maybe larger than what's shown on the document from Civitas. So, that is something that we can confirm, but it may be just be as far as parcelization and the drawing of the property lines.
Okay, well, and I think, again, if there's any issue, the council may get involved as well, because this has the net effect of, you know, putting additional assessment on folks. They're voting on it, they were given ballots, and whether they shared a common area or not, and so, at least I don't know who from your office has been advising, but I want to make, again, I understand, if you've included it all in there, but then, did somebody, if they had no assigned property owner, who got to vote on those parcels?
I don't know the answer to that question, so, yeah, I mean, I can look into it and get back to you if you'd like.
Okay, just before you take this action, I hate to see somebody challenge the P-Bid at some point in time, saying, well, yeah, you didn't think it was a property owner, but we're getting an assessment now, we didn't get a chance to vote back in July of 2022 when you all took this up, so.
I'm just looking at an email that I received from one of my staff, and according to the Streets and Highways Code, the board can make changes to the assessments or improvements after the hearing today, if that is the board's decision or will to do so. So, you can certainly change the boundaries.
If you need to bore down into this one way or the other, to be, again, fair, then we have some ability to adjust that even after today's hearing or...
At today's hearing.
Or at today's hearing. Okay, so it has to be done today. Okay.
But either way, by 3 o'clock, we can get a better answer to this question, because I appreciate you bringing this up, because it is a quirky thing in the diagram, and I would think if it's a shared parking area by, say, those other business owners there, I would like a better explanation as to why that wouldn't be included on a proportional, maybe assessed on a proportional basis, obviously, in terms of the shared parking location, so.
It's also my understanding, based on what I'm reading, is that, and staff could certainly speak to this better, but the engineers report in the management plan did find a benefit to this property owner. So whether or not the property owner agrees to it or not is the question, but according to the plan, there is a benefit.
And that's key, obviously. Okay.
Yeah. I would just note that the exhibit, while we were talking here, I looked back in what's in the staff report, and as Dorothy said, it shows a little broader coverage. It still shows areas excluded. I don't know if those are rights of way that are, you know, shared in common, but it still looks a little quirky even on your map. It's clearer, but, again, I appreciate any clarification, and I know your folks are very thorough with this, so I'm not questioning the work by either Civitas or by our county staff. And as I said a moment ago, I'm supportive. Well, actually, I look at the detail on the map that's on the last page, and it's even clearer. It would be, I don't have a number, but it's, it'd be the last page of our staff report that was attached. Exhibit B, but it still shows areas that are excluded. It shows buildings, but parking areas that aren't included. Yeah, so, maybe you can put that up on the board, Cheyenne, after, so somebody could all kind of look at what... Thanks. Thank you. I guess the sheet 5 of 5 of the actual, there it is. Yep. So... What's happening there?
So we'll look into it between now and 3:00 and tackle why that is, that common space. Is it an issue with, there wasn't a land use identified in the MDP, or specifically why the boundaries are drawn like this?
All right. And is that, are those commercial properties, or is that, that's a commercial properties, are they?
Okay, if my memory serves me, I believe these are, like, the buildings have been demolished, and these are just foundations right now.
Yeah, so if I may, Dave DeFanti, Deputy County Exec, I'm looking at an aerial. It is dated May of '21, so it's a year old, but it's showing that those are footprints of buildings that have been demolished. And frankly, I haven't drove that stretch or paid attention enough to Hurley, or to... And frankly, I haven't drove that stretch or paid attention enough to how there in quite a while to know what, if anything, has been built in the interim. But we'll follow up on that too before 3:00. But those are the footprints of what look like former buildings that have since been demolished. And the area around those buildings, particularly to the east, is parking.
And I guess one other point, I already said it. But if it's parking associated with an office park, it's no different, I would presume, than parking associated with a commercial property? Or maybe it's treated differently with multifamily? It's, but just because there's no one owner, if there's joint ownership somehow? Okay, you're going to take a look at the question. And again, I don't mean to throw a wrench into it, but it certainly seemed a little bit odd. And I probably should have raised it in my briefing. Although I briefed on Friday, I wasn't here yesterday, so... Okay. All right. Supervisor Frost?
I just had a question. Is it 3:00 or 2:00 p.m.? It says, "Hearing matters held from the morning session would come back at 2:00 p.m."
Yeah, we announced earlier that it was going to be 3:00, I think. Just when she started, there was, she corrected it. Correct flow?
Okay.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Yeah, thanks for... Okay, so we had no one else signed to speak. Do we want to keep the public hearing open in light of the question?
Yes.
Okay, so we'll keep the public hearing open. We'll return at 3:00 with the ballot tabulation and any response to this. And I, you know, I trust it won't interrupt the flow of things here. But I mean, this is the time to do it, I guess. Again, it's been a lot of work. And Supervisor Desmond and others, I'm sure, are very anxious to get underway. And there are some deadlines. In order to get this, again, in the, on the tax rolls for next year, this has to be acted upon today or by next month or next week?
So Friday of next week, we have to have the tax roll submitted to the Department of Finance.
All right. Okay, I know the clock's ticking, so... All right. Kelly, thanks for being on the phone. Anything else you wanted to add on this?
Yeah, as I'm looking closer to the map, I noticed on Exhibit A3, there's a much smaller but similar situation occurring with a common area. It's on Morse and Arden Way. Just wanted to point that out.
Okay, well, I think, I'm glad you identified that. Because again, if there's, and I assume you've scoured the map. If there are other situations that this has arisen, it sounds like maybe a second one to take a look at for Cheyenne and Dorothy and Dave. Good. Thank you for noting that. Anything else, Kelly?
No, that's it. Thank you.
Okay, well, you'll be available for 3:00, at 3:00, I trust. So, and I know Emily was here in the audience. Okay. All right. Okay, all right. Supervisor Desmond's going to take a run out there, so... Okay. All righty, very good. Thank you so much. Thanks for being here and available for questions for all the work that's led up to today. And we'll see you back here at 3:00, so...
Yeah. And so, if I may?
Yes.
So the counting of the ballots will occur in the old admin building in Room 304. And so folks can observe the ballot counting. And just as an added benefit or service to our constituents, you can also watch the ballots being counted. If you, I'll put this back up.
Okay.
Put their, put this email address. If you email that address, you'll get a link to a Zoom meeting to watch the ballots as well.
Just like the California Lottery, right? You can watch them all come up. Okay, so that's MiddletonM@saccoounty.gov. And what time will the ballot tabulation begin?
Once we leave this, the chambers.
Okay. All right, so momentarily? By around noon time?
Yes.
Okay.
And thank you, by the way, for your questions.
Oh, yeah, you betcha. Okay, very good. Okay, so ballot tabulation will begin shortly. And Supervisor Desmond's going to do a field trip and be back here by 3:00. And we'll see you back at 3:00. Thanks, Cheyenne. Thanks, Dorothy. Thanks, Kelly and Emily. All right. Item 59, then we're holding that over till 3:00 this afternoon. All right, next item.
Now it's time for closed session.
Time for closed session. Okay, that will be upstairs? Okay, and then we'll return at 2:00 for the...
3:00. 3:00.
For everything?
For everything, yeah.
Oh, I thought, okay, I just thought you were going to do this at 3:00. So we'll come, okay. 3:00 return, and we'll start the afternoon session, late afternoon.
Yeah, and we're also, the Alma sent a separate closed session link for Supervisor Kennedy and other staff who are going to be in that closed session.
Okay, very good. All right, Patrick?
The in-person is on the seventh floor.
Okay, Patrick, you got the information? You needed to get... Okay, very good. Thanks, okay. All right. We'll recess in the closed session, return at 3:00 this afternoon.
Why are we coming back at 2:00?
Good afternoon. Want to call back into session the Sacramento County Board Supervisors Meeting for July 26, 2022. And thank those who joined us this afternoon for the continuation of some of the morning session, but also for the afternoon session. And with that, I'll turn to our Clerk Florence Evans to call the roll to establish a quorum, please.
Good afternoon, members.
Here.
Kennedy?
Here.
Desmond?
Here.
Frost?
Here.
Natoli?
Here.
You have a quorum.
Very good. Okay. All right, we have an item carried over from this morning. So that's the first item we'll go to, right?
Yeah, I'll go ahead and read that back into the record. That was Item 59, Proposed Arden Arcade Property and Business Improvement District, Public Hearing to Establish the District in Levy Assessments and to Tabulate Assessment Ballots and Take Final Actions to Establish the District and Levy Assessments for Fiscal Year 2022-23. The environmental determination is exempt. And part of that was to continue and return to provide the results of the tabulation.
Okay. And there were some other questions from this morning as well, so...
Yes.
All right. Dr. Cheyenne Raymond, you're here.
Good afternoon. Chairman Natoli, members of the board. I'm Cheyenne Raymond with the County Engineering Division. As Supervisor Natoli mentioned, there were questions that were brought to our attention, and we went to go research those questions. And what we determined was that the master district plan does contemplate common area parcels. And the parcels that are shown in the parking lot from earlier are common area parcels. The master district plan indicates that these common area parcels are oddities, and they are typically not parcellized, and makes the assumption that these parcels will be not assessed. Now, what we don't know at this time is why the assessor considers these areas non, are common area parcels. And what we're requesting is that the board continue this item to August 9th, so we can look into this further. We've also coordinated with the Department of Finance. They will grant us a two-week extension to get the information and to make the levy.
Okay. Supervisor Desmond, I know you were going to take a look if you had a chance. I don't know if that happened, but I want to weigh in. I know we've worked on this, so...
No, I appreciate that, Cheyenne. And we had a discussion with Dave and Cheyenne about this. I mean, I certainly am supportive of holding this over till we get a better answer. And something else I want to make sure we're aware of, and was part of our discussion this morning, is if there are any other parcels on that map where there's a common area parcel, and is it included? Is it not included? And if it is included, why would it be treating it differently? In other words, want to make sure we're being consistent throughout the whole area that's contemplated for the Arden Way P-bid, obviously. And then my only other question is, would we hear about the ballots then today? Or we'd hold the whole thing over until...
We're continuing this to the 9th, so we'll...
Do that on the 9th as well?
Yes.
So the much anticipated opening of ballots did not occur today. Is that correct?
It did occur today.
Oh. Okay. Well, no, I'm not even asking about the results. I just, I think, in light of continuing it to get some clarity, if there were some other iteration that required some other folks to have a chance to vote on some... I mean, I don't know. I mean, I don't know what the implications are here. I don't even want to speculate. But I would have thought if we were going to continue that, I mean, you would probably would have... I mean, the ballots are in. I get that, in that period of time close. But let me turn to council, if you can.
I'm not, I believe the ballots were opened before the decision to continue was made. I could be wrong.
No, so the decision to come back with the response to the question, we hadn't opened the ballots at that point. But it's my understanding that there's no flaw in opening the ballots since we've continued the hearing.
Yeah, I don't know if, I don't think there's a flaw in opening them. If something does change, then it may need to be redone. But that remains to be seen. At this point, I don't believe, I don't know what the recommendation's going to be based on the information. But if there is a need to redo it, then obviously, we would advise that be done.
But there's no necessity to report out, because we aren't determining anything here yet today. We still haven't concluded the public hearing, which was a precursor to reporting the tabulation. Yeah, so, okay. So I assume council will advise as we go forward over the next couple of weeks, so...
Yes.
Okay. All right.
Then with that, I'd move to continue till, is it August 9th?
And we'll take that in the afternoon.
Okay, afternoon.
Second.
Okay, move to second. Supervisor Kennedy, did you have anything you wanted to comment on, on this?
No, sir.
Okay, all right. Okay, so we are going to continue the public hearing. We'll remain open. We are continuing the matter to get further clarification on some of the questions regarding the assessment as it pertains to specific parcels within the construct of the proposed P-bid. And then we'll have a report back and potential action, I guess, on the items that were actionable today on August 9th in the afternoon. Do you have a time flow? Or are you going to, you will assign a time to it?
I don't want to assign a time, but it will be in the afternoon.
Okay, so the afternoon. Okay, that is the motion to second then. We don't have anybody signed up in the afternoon session to speak to this. Is Item 59... All right.
Yeah, no.
Everybody on the phone?
No.
Yeah, because you read the one letter into the record, so... But again, the public hearing will remain open. So if folks wish to comment, they'll still have an opportunity between now and when we bring this back on August 9th. Okay, if nothing further, then please call the roll to determine the continuation.
Okay, Serna?
Aye.
Kennedy?
Aye.
Desmond?
Aye.
Frost?
Aye.
And Natoli?
Aye.
Okay, and the motion carries.
Thank you. Thanks to all. See you back.
Okay. For Item 60, I do need a motion to continue this item to August 23rd. This is the Public Hearing on Development Impact Fee Program Updates for the Arcade Creek, Carmichael, Fair Oaks, Mission Oaks, North Highlands, Orangeville, Rio Linda, Alberta, and Sunrise Recreation and Park Districts. Approve the Updated Fee Nexus Studies. The environmental determination is exempt.
Okay. Motion to continue this?
Motion to continue.
Second.
All right, so move to second to continue this item to August 23rd. Item 60, do we have any public comments on the item?
We do not have comments on this item.
Okay, no one signed up in the chambers as well, so... All right, see nothing further, then please call the roll.
Okay. Serna?
Aye.
Kennedy?
Aye.
Desmond?
Aye.
Frost?
Aye.
Natoli?
Aye.
Unanimous.
Okay.
And then on to our Item 61. This is the Sacramento Metropolitan Fire District Development Impact Fee Program Implementation, Adopting an Ordinance Adding Chapter 16.152 to Title 16 of the Sacramento County Code for the Establishment of the Sacramento Metropolitan Fire District Capital Fire Facilities Impact Fees.
Good afternoon, members of the board. Dorothy Cadani with the County Engineering Division. Let's hope this item's a little bit more seamless. The Sacramento Metropolitan Fire District began its impact fee collection in 2003. An updated nexus study was provided, which uses the plan-based method, which requires inventory of both existing and future facilities. The North State Building Industry Association challenged the inclusion of existing land values in the inventory if the district did not purchase the land. In response to this challenge, the district was willing to research their records and remove any land values that they could not substantiate. Therefore, the board opened the public hearing on June 7th for this item, approved the nexus study, and continued the item to today to review the revised fees. The district has now approved the removal of all existing land values from the inventory, which reduces the numbers that are used to calculate the fee by $43.9 million. This results in a 7.7% decrease from those fees that were proposed on June 7th. So at this time, we request your approval of the proposed fees. We would like to state that there is an increase in the existing fees, and this is due to the updated cost per capita and adjusted weighting factors that are used in this updated nexus study. For example, the single-family fee is proposed to increase by $100. I would like to conclude our presentation at this time by expressing our appreciation to the district with their cooperation in this endeavor, and to also thank the BIA for the support letter that was submitted in response to this item. At this time, we're happy to address any questions that the board may have, and there are representatives of the Fire District also available to answer any questions.
Okay. Any questions by board members? Okay, I'll see, any board members punch in. Supervisor Kennedy, any questions?
No questions.
Okay. All right, we do have one speaker signed up. So Dorothy, if you would just stay close. Chris Norm, Chris?
We also have a caller or two.
We have a caller as well. Okay, we'll go to the caller as well. Okay, thanks. Good afternoon, Chris.
Good afternoon. Chairman Natoli, supervisors. I'll make it quick. On this item, we're, you know, removing our opposition. We're sending a letter of support in. As you know, I think it was summarized very succinctly here as that we express concern about some of the items in the fee program, because they already owned the property. And we didn't feel like it was justified to charge new homeowners we didn't feel like it was justified to charge new homeowners the cost of paying for land that they already owned. So I want to thank the Metro Fire District and the county staff for extracting those items, and we remove our opposition. Urge you to move the item. Thank you.
Okay, thanks, Chris. Appreciate your words. Then we do have a caller on the phone?
Yeah, so, please transfer the caller. We're having just a slight technical difficulty. My apology.
Okay, it's okay.
Just about ready.
While we're waiting, did the Metro Fire District folks want to add any comments or anything?
Actually, I think, they're trying to call them back. They had hung up, and they're trying to call them back.
Okay.
So if we just give us a few seconds.
Sure.
Okay, so they've tried, and they're not answering, so, wait, hang on.
Try.
Thank God for technology.
Sometimes.
Mm-hmm. Okay, they were calling for the wrong item. They're actually calling for the cannabis item, so we can close that, and we'll move him into the right queue.
Okay, very good. Okay, I'll bring it back to the board. Is Supervisor Serna?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. If there are no questions or comments from board members, I'd like to move the item.
Okay, it's been moving in a second. So we'll, we've opened the public, well, I make sure the public hearing was open. We took public comment, so I will close the public hearing. And we do have a motion then to adopt the attached resolution. Anything else, Dorothy, you wanted to point out?
No.
Okay, very good. Okay, so we do have a motion in a second, and if there's no further comments by board members, I'll ask the clerk to call a roll, please.
Okay, Serna?
Aye.
Kennedy?
Aye.
Desmond?
Aye.
Frost?
Aye.
Natoli?
Aye.
Unanimous vote.
Very good.
Thank you.
Okay, thanks to all.
Well, this is unique. We're just three minutes after the 3:15 item. Okay, so.
Don't get used to it. Not under this chair, anyway.
All right. Item 62, Adoption of a Resolution Calling for an Election to Present to the Voters of the County a Proposed Ordinance to Establish a Special Tax on Cannabis and Hemp Business Activities. Introduction of an Ordinance to Add Chapter 3.50 to Title 3 of the Sacramento County Code, Establishing a Cannabis Business Tax on Cannabis and Hemp Business Activities Within the Unincorporated Area of the County. And we're asking you to waive full reading and continue to August 1 for adoption.
Okay, just before we get into, I just want to note, there's a number of folks who've signed up, so I have a group of folks that want to speak in a certain order, and then we have other folks who've signed in to speak as well. So we'll get into the discussion. We'll hear from the staff reports and any questions of board members, and we'll go to the public testimony, both in chambers as well as those who may be calling in. So that's kind of the order of things. And with that, Supervisor Serna, you're punched in?
Yes.
Okay, go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So this item is before us today, resulting from some direction that I provided at a prior board meeting, to have us explore the prospect of a special tax on various cannabis business activities in the unincorporated county, and what that might look like, given the fact that there was not the appetite, at least not the four-fifths appetite, for a general tax measure that was attempted at that very same meeting. And because we're up against a fairly tight timeline to get ballot language in, should it be the will of this board to qualify for this November's general election ballot, I felt it necessary to bring this back as soon as we could. I don't know that we're going to get a detailed staff report or not, but I know that County Council certainly put in a good deal of time and energy into looking at various options and language, and has worked with my office on that in the past few days. But that is something that I just thought it would be worth noting in terms of how we got to this point. And I'll also note that the direction was to look at a prospect of a special tax measure that would dedicate the revenue from that special tax on various cannabis business activities in the unincorporated county for homeless services countywide, and with particular mention in the ballot measure itself of addressing the impacts of homelessness on the American River Parkway. So I don't know if Ms. Travis would like to take it from here.
Sure. We don't have a formal staff presentation, but Supervisor Serna has now done a good job of summarizing what is before you today. We are asking the board to consider adoption of a resolution, as Supervisor Serna mentioned, in, which would put the special tax measure on the ballot. We're also asking the board to introduce an ordinance that would add Chapter 3.5 to Title 3 of the county code. Again, that would only be effective if the ballot measure passed in November. I will have to point out one thing that we need to change in the ordinance, and that is the effective, the effective date in Section 4. It refers to if a majority of the voters voted for it, but it should say two-thirds. So we'll make sure if the ordinance is introduced today to change that when it comes back for adoption next Monday. I would be happy to answer any questions. We also have Amanda Thomas on the line, I believe, and the consultant, Mr. McPherson, as well, on the line.
Okay. Thanks, Lisa. I know Supervisor Desmond, they may have some questions. And then we do have Amanda. Thank you for joining us by phone, and then we'll see what questions we have.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and thank you Supervisor Serna for this suggestion. So thank you, counsel, for clarifying that, that the, that this would require a two-thirds support, support of two-thirds of the voters. And, and just to make that also clear, because we had some discussions a couple of weeks ago about which voters would be eligible. This will be every, every registered voter in the county. Is that correct?
That's correct.
But it is, it's still correct that, though, after that vote, we would be able to, we would be able to determine what the support level is in the unincorporated county, and we'd be able to evaluate that, which, which I think is crucial. And I mentioned this, this before, and this was a big part of the discussion with, with me and Supervisor Frost, and concerns that we really make sure we amplify the voice of the folks in the unincorporated county. Obviously, that's where the, the big change would occur, and that's, that's, of course, good government, to make sure we're being primarily responsive to them. And then the other question I had is, I mean, I frankly, I think it's a very good suggestion, two very good elements of this. Number one, a two-thirds vote requirement for a authorizing tax measure, I think, is a good thing in general. And I think, you know, I know, I know local governing bodies want to maintain discretion over how they use funds, but to specifically dedicate these funds to deal with a crisis that is the biggest crisis this county's probably ever faced, frankly, or any municipal body, I think is important. But related to that, I guess I had a question for you, counsel. In terms of, in terms of fees that would cover code enforcement and other county services, inspections of, of any commercial cannabis industry, that would be separate and distinct from this tax. Is that correct?
Yes, that's correct.
Okay, well, thank you.
We would have a cost recovery built into the program if the board decides to adopt a program.
Okay. And that's, thank you for, for saying that. It was a rhetorical question, but I think it's important for folks to realize that, that the tax would not cover the county's expenses of essentially regulating this industry. And then, one other thing, to be crystal clear, and I know this is, again, kind of a rhetorical question, this is step one. This is not the board creating a regulatory scheme. We are not deciding today on where, when, how, number of dispensaries, or what type, and when, and where any other commercial cannabis, commercial enterprise would be located in the county. Is that accurate?
Yes, that's correct.
And, and we will, we will be having that discussion later if a ballot measure like this were to pass.
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
If I could, I know we have other supervisors in the queue. To be crystal clear, though, that absent this measure on the ballot, passage or not, the authority is vested with this body at any point in time. Certainly wouldn't have the ability to tax if a measure wasn't approved. But to regulate and permit for cost recovery, this board could entertain that discussion anytime in the future.
Right.
Okay, this one. I, I know we went over that again, kind of rhetorical, but I thought it was important for folks that may or may not have been following this closely. Okay, all right. Supervisor Frost and Supervisor Serna?
Thank you. I wanted to ask, counsel, I just wanted to clarify, does this limit the net funds going to the unincorporated homelessness, or is it countywide? In other words, we could, we could prioritize the unincorporated, but this doesn't preclude us from anything beyond the unincorporated homelessness?
Funds can be used countywide, as long as they're being used for homeless-related services.
Okay, and is there any, anything in this that would preclude us from changing down the road, the, where those funds would go, that are, you know, we're specifically saying that all, all of the proceeds from the tax measure would go to homelessness only? Is there anything that would preclude us, or is there a, preclude us from reallocating those funds to other areas?
Yes, you would not be able to reallocate any funds raised through this special tax, anything other than homeless services.
Okay.
So there is, there is a strict prohibition from doing what you're asking.
I'm not asking to do it, I'm just clarifying.
Yes, yes, thank you. What you're contemplating, I guess. Yeah. That's, that's the, I guess, purpose of a special tax, is you could only use it for what the voters have decided to use it for.
And this is a special tax, but the entire county is voting on this special tax for businesses in the unincorporated?
Yes, thank you.
Okay. All right, Supervisor Serna?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'll be brief, because I know we have speakers that are waiting patiently. I appreciate the questions from my colleagues. I just want to put a finer point on, I think, the question about having the discretion later in terms of the geography of, of where we would, where we could enhance services for our unsheltered constituents, and certainly specifically in the American River Parkway, the way it's currently written. And that is not unlike how we approach services, the whole gamut of services, under the rubric of homelessness here in Sacramento County currently. We have certain programs that, such as our HOT Teams, right? That's a service that's administered through the Sheriff's Department, and of course, the Sheriff's Department necessarily focuses their service in the unincorporated county. But then we have, you know, the spectrum of addiction services, mental health services, which are kind of by definition countywide. So those are provided to our constituents, whether they live in one of the seven cities in the county or the unincorporated. So the precedent, if you will, is kind of built into this. And while I appreciate the concern that was made obvious at the prior board meeting and through your questions today, I think we can certainly, again, if it passes, have those productive discussions later about how best to use that, hopefully use that deliberate funding for homelessness where it's most needed.
Okay. All right, Supervisor Kennedy, do you have any questions at this juncture?
Yes, thank you, Chair. I just wanted to, I believe that Supervisor Frost indicated that, and maybe I've heard it wrong, I just want to make it clear, that this would tax businesses within the county or the unincorporated area. It would actually tax regulated cannabis businesses that are lawfully operated in the unincorporated area, as well as the seven cities. And I specifically, at this point, being where regulation stands, that would mean the delivery business. So we would actually be imposing taxes on businesses outside of the unincorporated area, and I just wanted to make that clear.
Thank you, Supervisor Kennedy.
That's a good point. Thank you.
Just a couple of questions for Lisa, and then we'll go to public testimony. So when we last left this, I know, and you've done a lot of work around this over the last couple of weeks, there was, again, I think, at least some question, maybe never in counsel's mind, but as related to whether or not there would be a way to structure a measure that could go solely to the unincorporated area electorate versus the countywide electorate. Again, you'd brought us many examples, but I think certainly Supervisor Serna, not to misstate anything he said, but he had asked Lisa to take a look at that, so I trust you have looked at that again. And, and from your vantage point and the attorneys and all, there is no way that you could, to take a measure of this sort solely to the areas that would be impacted. Aside from the delivery services from other municipalities, all the other activities would, would reside within the area of the county if we chose to regulate or permit those at a future date. So, but there's no way to structure a measure that could go solely to the voters of the area that would most be directly affected by any locational activities?
Yes, we certainly took a very deep dive and look into that, due to the nature of the type of tax that's going to be, or could be imposed. And under the Revenue and Taxation Code that's applicable, there is not a way to structure it for only unincorporated residents to vote.
Okay.
There are other sections of the Revenue and Taxation Code where that is allowed, but that is more for a sales tax measure, which this is not. And so it's not possible to segregate the vote just to unincorporated voters.
And as quirky as it, it may be, what it does, though, I guess, the way the law is written, it allows cities, should they choose to regulate or permit those activities and propose a tax, to do that solely within their boundaries. They don't have to go through the entire county to decide what they're going to do in Galt, or Citrus Heights, or Folsom, or even City of Sacramento, pick any one of the seven cities. And, but they would go to their voters under the law relative to a tax, but it would be solely to the, to the electors in that municipality and not outside, whereas here, the county has to submit it to the entirety of the county, recognizing that any revenues now being directed, at least under proposal, to be used countywide. So there's the, you know, that, that connection. But cities are not given the same restrictions. Is that accurate?
In the, in the context of this type of tax?
Yeah.
Yes, that is correct.
Okay.
I mean, I gave you, I think, examples last time of other types of measures, fees, that only apply to certain people or businesses in the city, but the entire city would be eligible to vote on it.
Right.
So there's analogous for different types of taxes and fees, but in this case, you're correct.
Okay. So just a couple of questions about the specifics. So the way this is structured, there is no sunset, so, and there's, I guess, the, I don't know, once the measure were voted on, if we're voted in the affirmative and then imposed on activities in the future, is there, once it's in place, it's in place, and, and there's no rescission authority, or is there with the board? So if a future board decided, we don't want to tax this activity any longer, even though people said we could, we may want to permit it, but we don't want to tax it. Is there that kind of, you know, authority in the current law, or no?
So the measure would be in place until repealed, and it would be repealed, only repealed by the voters.
Okay.
But to answer the specific question, if a future board decided they don't want cannabis in Sacramento County, they would have to amend, the board would have to amend the actual ordinance that you're introducing. So if, if a future board said, we don't want cannabis anymore, you would just get rid of the program, and then you wouldn't be collecting the tax.
Right.
Does that make sense?
Yeah, it does.
But the tax would still be on the books until repealed.
But you would, there'd be no activity to tax.
Taxes on nothing.
Yeah, right, I get that. But I was just looking at the alternative of that. If you had a regulated, regulated activity, you recovered costs, but chose not to tax it, so to speak, you don't have that authority. I mean, we don't have that, it wouldn't be vested in our authority. It's the counter, that you could suspend all permitting of the activities or regulation of it, and then prohibit it. Once again, then there's no tax to what Supervisor Serna said.
Well, I guess theoretically you could, because the ordinance allows for the board to change the percentages of the tax.
Make it zero.
So, you can make them zero.
Okay, so you could, okay. Well, that clarifies it. I didn't know, I didn't know you could actually go down from there, because the voters have authorized changes. I guess we'll presume that those go up, but it could go down or to zero.
Right.
Okay. But there is no sunset?
That's correct.
Okay. And then lastly, to, a couple of questions of clarification here, that would the monies that would be derived from any taxation of these activities, would it be deposited in a special fund, or would go to just a general fund and have to be accounted for? What sort of methodology is used when you have a special tax measure? Because some of these require, you know, when you're talking about measures, now, with sales tax, you have an oversight committee that advises the body on how the funds ought to be used and so forth. This is going to be very deliberate and distinct in what's being proposed, but how, how are those bodies accounted for?
That is a question, I think, for staff, because I, I know that there is a special fund. It doesn't go to the general fund.
Right.
But we've talked about that with Department of Finance and the Chief Fiscal Officer. So maybe if Amanda could take that question, that would be helpful.
Sure. Okay, Amanda, can you fill that one, please? And she's on the phone.
Sure, yes. Good afternoon, Chair Natoli, members of the board. Amanda Thomas, Chief Fiscal Officer. Can you hear me all right?
Yeah.
Great. So, yeah, Lisa was correct. I mean, essentially, my understanding of how this would work is that we would establish a special fund, so all of the revenues collected would go into that fund, and then they would only be able to be used for eligible expenditures. So in this case, expenditures related to addressing homelessness in the county.
Okay, so there would be, not just the nexus established in the measure, but then there would have to be an accounting for that budgetarily each and every year, which is auditable as well. So, okay, all right. Thank you, Amanda. So Supervisor Desmond, you have a follow-on question?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. One, I appreciate the, the discussion about what level of authority that this, the board retains, obviously, with this, and wouldn't be able to overturn the tax measure. But obviously, there's a lot we can do in terms of the overall regulatory structure that this board creates. And, and I just want to also be clear on something. If we do, if this board, say, and I know I'm dealing in hypotheticals here, say this passes, and this board does nothing in terms of allowing regulatory opera, or commercial operations in the county, we could nonetheless, or could we, nonetheless, tax deliveries occurring in the unincorporated county. Could we do that if this passes?
Yes.
And without this, we cannot do that.
Right.
Okay. And I want to be very clear on that, because something I've said many, many times is, you know, I know for a fact, you know, a lot of deliveries are happening right now in the unincorporated county. So, thank you.
And I have to clarify something, but my deputy county council let me know. We, you can't bring it down to zero. So, but the fact remains.
Because we said a basement?
Right.
Yeah.
So, but the fact remains, if you don't have the program, then you wouldn't have the tax imposed. So I just wanted to clarify that.
Supervisor Kennedy has this.
Yeah, okay. Supervisor Kennedy, go ahead.
I'm sorry, I forgot to lower my hand. But thank you, Supervisor.
It's interesting, because I can't see the hand to my left over here. It's over, and I gotta look to the screen over here. It's.
You should be able to see it on the screen.
No?
I actually see a hand.
A little dot?
Well, just press your. Well, now I don't, because he took this hand down.
Okay.
Like this little show up.
Oh, right here?
There you go.
Oh, yeah, dude, split, gotta split the screen. Oh, okay, got it. Very good. All right, Patrick.
You're teaching, you know, the.
Yeah, yeah, right. Teaching the old lettered over here. Okay, all right. I'll be watching for that split screen. Okay, so with that, then, if there's nothing else from board members at this juncture, we'll go. we'll go to our public testimony, and we'll bring it back after we've heard from folks, so. Okay, so I'm going to go in the order they were handed to me. I have Diana Pogero, followed by Courtney Lang, followed by Diana Garcia, and then I have a group of folks who have asked to speak and some beyond that. So, well, those are the first three. Diana, good afternoon.
Good afternoon, Chair Natoli and Supervisors. My name is Diana Pogero. I'm the Executive Director of the American River Parkway Foundation, and we are here in support of the ballot measure, the proposed measure, because, one, as we all know, the Parkway is ground zero for homeless. So, any additional resources that can be brought to the county to address homelessness, in particular to the Parkway, would be greatly appreciated. We look forward to assisting in whatever way we can in helping spread the message and bring the Parkway back to what it should be, and to address those that have chronic, whether it's illness, drug, or what. I look at this as tobacco funds clean air. Cannabis can hopefully fund homeless services that will relate to drug and mental health, social services, as well as additional housing. So, thank you.
Thanks Diana.
Tobacco also funds our early learning for kids, zero to five, too. Point that out.
Courtney.
Hello, hi, my name is Courtney Lang. I'm a resident of Sacramento County in District Three. I'm here to support this resolution. I appreciate all the time and effort you've put into making this, making it this far on the resolution, and so, support cannabis businesses here in the county, and I also support the initiative to help homelessness out in the county. Thank you again for the time.
Great, thank you Courtney for being with us. Okay, Diana, Garcia. And then Diana will be followed by Joel O'Rourke and a group of folks, so.
Hi guys, thank you for your time today, for all your hard work, dedication, and for bringing this back to this meeting today. Our homelessness is, you know, exploding in the county of Sacramento, because we're in a rural area, and it's easier to be homeless there and not be in the downtown of a big city. So, if we could pass this, and we could use that funds for the homeless, then I think that would make a huge dent in what we have been trying to accomplish for a very long time, as our homeless population continues on growing and our budgets continue on shrinking for such a matter. So, thank you for voting on it today, and thank you for bringing it up today.
Great, thanks Diana for being with us. Okay, so next I have a group of folks. There are four of them attached, Joel O'Rourke, followed by Sherri England, followed by Sarjeet Nahal, and then Jonathan Denier. So, good afternoon.
Good afternoon, Chair Natoli and Vice Chair Desmond and Supervisors. My name is Joel O'Rourke, and I'm the Sacramento County Tobacco Use Prevention Education Coordinator. I also coordinate the Sacramento County Coalition for Youth out of the Sacramento County Office of Education. We provide tobacco use, education, prevention to the school districts, as well as alcohol and drug prevention throughout Sacramento County. I'm here today to share a few data points around our youth, which might be helpful in your decision-making. First, e-cigarettes or vaping devices are the most commonly used tobacco products among young people in California and nationally. And I share this as students are more and more utilizing vaping devices to consume marijuana. In 2018, there were 1.5 million more youth vaping than the year prior. A 2016 study found young people vape because they have friends or family who vape, the products are flavored, and they believe that vaping is less harmful for them than cigarettes. Here in Sacramento County, data from our California Healthy Kids Survey shows us that vaping among high school students has risen despite cigarette use dropping, and marijuana use is high. One quarter, or 25% of our high school students reported having tried marijuana, and a little over 12% report using it in the last 30 days. Almost half of current marijuana users, 49.4%, co-use marijuana with a tobacco product. Also, according to our California Healthy Kids Survey, and this is Sacramento County data, 17% of ninth graders and 28% of 11th graders, which is almost a third, report that it's very easy for students in their grade to get marijuana. And the perception of harm of marijuana decreases as young people get older. So, about 37% of seventh graders, 35% of ninth graders, and 30% of 11th graders report that there's a great risk of people harming themselves physically in other ways when they use marijuana occasionally. I meet with our school districts every month, the prevention folks in the school districts, and here's a few things that they've shared. The students are using tobacco and marijuana products at school due to the inconspicuous means of consumption, such as through vaping and edibles. It's very difficult for schools to detect. Parents and teachers may not be aware of these products as they don't look like traditional cigarettes or marijuana, as we've known it in the past. And we know that parents are concerned. Districts are receiving calls several times a week for support of students in need of intervention. And last, just two data points to share around restricting sales. Studies that were conducted around tobacco can apply here. The density of tobacco retailers, particularly in neighborhoods surrounding schools, has been associated with increased youth smoking rates. And youth are more likely to experiment with tobacco products when retailers are located near their schools. The health concerns for youth and their developing brains continues to be studied, but potential adverse ramifications to youth health due to marijuana use are high and an area of concern. Thank you.
Michelle, thanks for your good work, too. Appreciate it.
Can I ask a question of the speaker?
Yeah.
Thank you for being here and providing us the information. Do you have any data on how youth, those that are, you know, 20, I guess, 21 or younger, how are they acquiring the marijuana that they say they're using? Do they get it in a dispensary, or do they get it from the black market?
It's a great question, and I don't, you know, it's not a question that's answered through the Healthy Kids Survey data. So, you know, I mean, we have focus groups of young people, we can ask them. I am fairly sure they're not getting it from dispensaries, and that's just my opinion, but we, our coalition is training dispensary staff, so, and including in that training information about youth prevention, and so, we're trying to build advocates of the dispensary staff, so they don't sell to young people. And not only that they don't sell to young people, but they know why to not sell to young people. It's really important. But we don't have, I don't have that data point, I don't. But some of my colleagues are going to share some information about, and it might be helpful, so.
Great, and I appreciate that. And I would invite you, should the measure pass, and should the board, well, first of all, should the board put the measure on, should the measure pass, and should we take up the do's and don'ts around regulating and permitting marijuana? I think that's where you can be very helpful in terms of that discussion, because today's discussion, the focus is yes or no, do we put this language on the ballot? Thanks.
Understood, thank you.
Is that why I think Supervisor Desmond has a question, board?
Well, thank you, I was going to say ditto to what Supervisor Serna was saying. I was thinking the exact same thing, and I hope you'll, if these things occur, Supervisor Serna mentioned, I hope you will really join us in helping inform what we ultimately do. And, you know, maybe it's naive, but I really think that in Sacramento County, we can look at lessons learned and best practices to make sure, if we ever go that route, that we establish a regulatory framework that is the safest possible for our youth, right? So, thank you.
That's definitely what we'd like to do. Thank you, thank you.
Good, thanks Michelle. Okay, next Sherri England. Good afternoon Sherri.
Hi, thank you for the time. I'm Sherri England, I'm the Associate Director of Omni Youth Programs, which is a local nonprofit here in Sacramento. We've been providing drug and alcohol prevention programs for youth in Sacramento for about over 40 years. I myself have been working with young people for about 30 years. And just as my colleague Joel shared, our goal really is to protect children and to protect young people. And in doing that, it's not just really about laws and regulations, and as far as we're concerned, but it's about educating the young people on what some of the risks are. We're especially concerned, because when I go out there and share some of this stuff, the young people aren't aware. One of the number-one things we're worried about is the increasing level of THC that's available. One thing, when Prop 64 was legalized, they didn't put a cap on the THC. And the THC, as we know, has a psychoactive kind of effect, part of the drug. The CBD has no psychoactive effect. And it has changed so dramatically, because with legalization comes competition. So, the people that sell, you know, of course, want a better product. And for adults, you know, that's a different thing. But young people especially need to be made aware that, and parents who maybe used it back in the day, need to be made aware that the marijuana today is quite different. Back in the 60s, it was maybe 1% to 3%. In the 80s and 90s, it went up to about 5%. Now, the average in dry form is around 30% to 35%. In fact, just down the freeway at our state fair, they're having a cannabis award for the strain that can come up with the highest level of THC at our state fair. And if you're talking about concentrated form, which Joel talked about, which shows up in the edibles and the vapes, that can be as high as 100% THC. And again, there's no regulation against that. And so, a lot of the problems and changes that we're seeing in marijuana, when I talk to recovery specialists and mental health specialists and emergency room doctors and nurses, they're seeing marijuana show up in places that never did before, and they think the high THC is a part of that. And not only that, but I think it's important to note that the CBD does have some promise, especially for medical, but THC and CBD cannot exist together, they polarize each other. As one goes up, the other goes down. So, as the THC is increasing, the CBD and the kind of part that protects our brain from that THC is actually almost gone completely. So, we just, again, just are here to help as much as we can, inform on just, I know that's not the issue today, as Supervisor Serna said. But again, we just want to let you know that we're here and want to support you in any decisions going forward to help protect our young people.
Great.
Thank you.
Thank you Sherri. Okay, Sarjeet, and then Jonathan.
Hello.
Hi.
Good afternoon. I'm Sarjeet Nahal, and I'm Program Director at Pro Youth and Families, which is another nonprofit here in Sacramento, and we work directly with middle school, high school kids around prevention. I also just want to highlight what Joel and Sherri said, but focus on the mental health effects on youth with marijuana use. So, I'm just going to quote a study that was done in 2019. The study is in the Lancet Medical Journal, and they came up with the fact that daily cannabis users are five times more likely to develop a severe mental illness such as psychosis or schizophrenia. And the risk of psychosis triples when using these products, with 15% THC potency or higher. And so, just like Sherri highlighted, the THC potency has increased, and that's a huge concern to us. And just like they both said, that's what we're concerned about right now, is the effect on youth. So, thank you.
Thank you. And I know some of you signed a letter that we received, I think, before the last meeting with some of the organizations. We appreciate you being here in person today, so, great. Okay, next Jonathan Denier, Jonathan will be followed by Richard Miller, followed by Sarah Michael Caston. Caston. Jonathan, good afternoon.
What's up? Hello, County Board Supervisors. As you may well know, my name is Jonathan Denier, and I'm a resident of the unincorporated part of the county. I've been here all my life, my family's been here farming for almost over a century, but I am here today to not talk about that. I'm here today to talk about the general disapproval for any kind of resolution regarding cannabis taxation going to the November 2022 election. If this tax potentially ends up allowing cultivation, retail, et cetera, sales of cannabis in the unincorporated parts of the county, I express with utmost disapproval. I also find it appalling that the board will be potentially allowing pot sales, while at the same time, just allowing me my access to my menthols. I do not like any other types of flavored cigarettes, vaping of any of that kind. All those are bad, just my menthols. Any of these retail places market towards easy access in terms of pot sales. And then, just to top it all off on a high note, since May 10th-
On a high note?
That was not intentional.
That was a lot of Jonathan rigging.
Regarding complexities of cannabis in the county, such as public safety aspects as presented on, well, on the 10th, Susan Frost brought that up, and also the presentations regarding the negative and positive aspects, effects thereof, were really informative, and I applaud the entire board and the entire county, Sacramento County, for making it possible for the public to view this. So, and thank you.
Great, thanks Jonathan, thanks for being with us this afternoon. Okay, next, Richard Miller. Richard, good afternoon.
Good afternoon, Rich Miller for Americans for Safe Access. I just want to thank you for bringing this up again this week, especially after our last meeting. These are two very important issues to me. As you know, we've been advocating here in Sacramento County for 10 years or plus to try to get patients' access and consumers' access to cannabis. We did pass 21525 years ago, yet now, we've passed Prop 64, yet we still don't have access in our county. So, I do want to bring that up and make you aware that I do think the citizens of this community should have the right to vote on this. So, I do appreciate you bringing up this ballot measure to us. The other important thing is the unhoused. Personally, I haven't been unhoused myself, I know how difficult it is to get out of that situation. Most individuals cannot, and after being on the streets for a week, you develop mental issues. So, I think it's very imperative that we move forward, that we take this into consideration, and also, that we take care of our unhoused. And with doing this with the cannabis initiatives tax, it will promote this county to a better standing, and have the cities and the cities and the states around the, California and the United States, implement programs like this. I ask for your support in this measure today and moving it forward for a ballot. Thank you for your time and appreciation, and thank you for the citizens of this community.
Great. Thank you, Richard. Okay, next Sarah Michael Caston, and then Kimberly Cargill, and then Adiola Adiepe. I think I said that right, so, if not, correct me when you get here. Sarah, good afternoon.
Hi, Board Supervisors, I'm Sarah Michael Gaston, the Deputy Director at Youth Forward. Thank you for bringing this forward again, really appreciate Supervisor Serna for talking to us about it and making it a special tax. Youth Forward is an advocacy nonprofit that is dedicated to improving the health, education, and well-being of our most vulnerable children and youth. We don't endorse legalized cannabis, but we do know that cannabis sales in the state of California are growing. Marijuana is the most commonly used illegal substance among adolescents, and there are health risks to those whose brains are still developing. Therefore, we advocate on behalf of children and youth to protect them and prevent adverse outcomes. Two weeks ago, we came before you and asked you to invest cannabis revenue in youth substance abuse prevention and youth mental health with our priority on communities of color impacted by the war on drugs. Now that your proposal has changed, we like to express support for the idea of having cannabis revenue go to a targeted purpose rather than the general fund. We believe cannabis revenue should not be invested to expand law enforcement, but rather to support health services for the most vulnerable. We're supportive of the idea of cannabis revenue going to support homeless services, and would like to urge you to include transition-aged youth in your plan for the use of revenue, because substance abuse and mental health are drivers of youth homelessness. According to the California Coalition for Youth, homeless youth show an elevated risk of mental health problems, including anxiety disorders, depression, post-traumatic stress disorder, and suicide due to increased exposure to violence while living on the street. Homeless youth also have high rates of substance use. 30% to 40% of homeless youth report alcohol problems in their lifetime, and 40% to 50% report drug problems. In order to prevent chronic homelessness among our youth, we recommend you direct revenues towards transition-aged youth in your plan, should you vote to put this ordinance on the ballot, and it is approved by Sacramento County residents. Thank you again for your time and for consideration of this request.
Thank you.
Thank you Sarah, appreciate you being here. Okay, next Kimberly, and then Adiola. Hi Kimberly.
Good afternoon Supervisors, thank you for having us here today. I want to start by thanking all the ladies that spoke and all the work they do for our community and for the youth. I look forward to hopefully working with them to enact mandatory education for dispensary workers for early childhood and teenager youth prevention. I think that would be a revolutionary program that the Sacramento County could implement.
They're all nodding their heads, yes.
Yeah, so I have my business cards for you. I've been actually advocating on the state level for many years for mandatory education for bedtenders, and many senators have said, "Get it enacted on the local level first, and then we'll look at the state." So, that would be really amazing if we could do something for mandatory education on the local level. I'm here today to support the tax initiative, because homelessness is the number-one issue that's affecting our communities, and it is so sad to see all these people, and to, we try, you know, as humans to help them, but little can we do alone. And the advocacy organizations don't have the money that they need, the charities don't have the money that they need. We're slipping into a recession, and I assume it's only going to get worse. And so, if there's anything that we can do to raise money for this particular issue, I think that would be- for this particular issue, I think that would be a good thing. And it'd be an honor to see cannabis doing that. I also want to speak to the fact that, you know, cannabis is being used. And it is being used as a medicine in Sacramento County. And people are having to drive long distances to get to dispensaries to provide the medications that they need or they are getting it on the unregulated untaxed market. And so, just as we don't want our children using alcohol, we don't want them using cannabis, but it is out there, right? And so we're not banning bars, we're not banning liquor stores, we're not banning pharmacies. We are providing them in a regulated and taxed environment so that they're in the light, so the police know where they are. And we know that an ID is required to enter that facility. So with regulations come public safety. With regulations come environmental protections. And with regulations come protections for consumers and protections for our youth. And so just sweeping this issue under the rug is not helping anyone. So thank you for talking about this today.
Mr. Chair, a question for Kim.
Yeah, Kimberly, Supervisor Serna had a question.
And I realized I should have asked this question last time. But in addition to the cannabis industry being taxed as they are, and I'll just use the city of Sacramento as the closest example, can you speak to what you know anecdotally or perhaps you even have data on charitable contributions from dispensaries and other elements of kind of the cannabis, you know, business infrastructure here in Sacramento?
Yeah, so for many years, you know, the first 20 years that the cannabis industry started on its own, it was a nonprofit industry. So in 2018, it became for-profit. Prior to that, all of the money made had to go back to the community. So our industry is actually very well-known for being very involved in charities. The last couple of years, that involvement has gone way down due to COVID and due to sales going down and revenues going down and profit going down. But prior to that, our industry is actually very well-known for being very involved in charity. And at a therapeutic alternative, all of the money we made at the end of the month would go back to charity. We actually have very little to give to charity at this time, but look forward to the future where we can do so again.
Great, thank you.
Great. Thank you, Kimberly. Okay, next Adiola. And then the last person who signed up is John Long. So if there's anybody else who wishes to speak here in chambers, please get a speaker form. Otherwise, then we'll go to the phone for any callers, so. Good afternoon.
Good afternoon. Hi, my name is Adiola Adipe. I am the founder of Adiola's Advocacy. I am a community advocate in the Sacramento region. I'm here with my young two children, two-year-old Ilya and seven-year-old Aiden, who is our leukemia survivor. Aiden was given three days to live in 2016 due to leukemia. And I am a very, I was very conservative with cannabis, but we did decide to put him on RSS oil, which in turn saved his life. He went from three days to live to our miracle baby on the third floor, our leukemia survivor, now our cannabis advocate. I now have stepped down from corporate America and I do work in the cannabis industry. And I have witnessed young adults and teenagers who have medical recommendation and have gone through the clearance to be able to use cannabis and have witnessed them communicating how they have gotten off of a lot of their psych med medications and have used CBD and cannabis as an alternative measure. We are here in support of the bill. It's just, our homeless community is just out of control. As a mother, sometimes even coming down here and parking, I did not feel safe with my two young children. So it'll be nice to see some resources, especially in the Sacramento community as I've witnessed us being a sanctuary-focused area in the downtown area. I have family members who do live in the Rockland area and have been told that they give bus tickets to come down here in Sacramento as part of our problem, in my opinion. So we are in support of just resources for mental health and addiction and things like that. And with that, just being able to focus on our vulnerable community and really like to see things turn around for our homeless community. So here's Aiden. He would like to say something.
Okay, Aiden, good afternoon. You say hi.
Good afternoon. My name is Aiden. I support the bill.
All right.
Okay, Aiden.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Great, thank you, Adiola. Thanks. Okay, then next I have John Long. John? Good afternoon, John.
Thank you for Board of Supervisors. Definitely appreciate you. I definitely support this bill. Safe, accessible cannabis is definitely needed for the outside locations of your guys' district. I actually have a licensed delivery, license delivery, license that I recently received. Wanted just to express that a lot of our patients and so forth are in your districts. And they, you know, they're always asking, "Hey, like, when are you going to get a local dispensary?" and so forth. And we're like, "Well, as soon as they go ahead and, you know, regulate this, then we'll, you know, be somewhere in the area and provide that safe, accessible platform for customers and patients as well." The other thing I wanted to speak on is the city has received, and they have data that they received over $20 million in excess of this cannabis tax. They actually have a lot of data regarding the city use of funds and so forth. Right now, there's 1% that's pulled from each cannabis company to basically help with outlining issues such as homelessness and so forth. But our question is, if we're giving you this money, are you actually going to be doing anything with it? Because actively, that's the major thing that we're looking at at the end of the day, is to making sure, like, everybody's actually being helped. My, for myself, I've experienced homelessness at one point in time. Now I'm in a situation where I can actually be able to help people and I actively, as a company, go and do that. So I wanted to thank you guys for your time and definitely appreciate you guys.
Thank you.
Thank you, John. I just need to ask you, so your business address is actually on High Street?
No, no, no.
Oh. Well, that's what you put here.
I'm sorry. When I wrote that down, she just told me to, yeah.
It's okay. I just thought you got the address for the business. I guess so, so.
But yeah. But thank you very much. I appreciate it.
Mr. Chair, and just to the one concern that you expressed about making sure the money's going to be used for what we say is going to be used, that's the kind of beauty of a special tax, if you will, because you are required by way of the election code to be that specific. You have to explain what the revenue is going to be used for. So that's what is being deliberated today. So even if we had some burning need to do something else and this was passed and we adopted, you know, permission and regulatory framework for it and business was active in the unincorporated county, we would be forbidden by law to use the money for anything that is outside of what is communicated in the ballot language.
Yeah. I think that's great because, you know, a lot of my family members were in the mental health industry. So I understand that this is a great need going forward. I'm an eighties baby, so come from a background where, yeah, there was a lot of things going on back in the days. But I think between myself, Kimberly Carlisle, and an associate Eric of mine, if we could sit down, we would be able to help outline a lot of the issues in the cannabis industry. Definitely, what I would say is don't overtax, but we're already going to do the work in the community to take care of issues anyways. Work with us. That's all we're asking for.
Thank you.
Great, thanks, John. Okay, I don't see any other questions for Supervisors. We'll go to our phones then. Do we have any callers?
Jillian, please transfer the first caller.
We have about three.
Okay.
Hi, caller. Can you, yeah, can you mute the meeting in the background?
Absolutely.
Thank you. And then when you do that, you can start with your comments. You have three minutes.
Okay.
Thank you.
How well I know when to start talking?
Yes, you can start now.
Go ahead.
Okay. Hi there. I'm Cynthia Mumford. I'm the Executive Director at Omni Youth Programs. We're a local nonprofit that provides youth drug prevention. And we've been around since 1979. And I thank you very much for allowing me to make a phone presentation as I can't be there in person. And I work alongside previous presenters here today, Joelle, Sheri, Sarb. And I wanted to add a few more of those factoids about this. And so my portion that I wanted to add was about the relationship and the link between youth marijuana use and opioid use. So one of the first things I want to mention is that a 2020 study showed that the number one risk factor for adolescent opioid misuse is having ever used marijuana at any time in their lifetime. Even a single exposure to marijuana increases the chances. We know in the earlier years of marijuana legalization around the country for various reasons, they were really, everybody was really hopeful this could reduce opioid use by legalizing or making it available medicinally. And by the way, that information about the relationship of opioid misuse in a lifetime is on the CDC website currently. But based on another study in 2019, they found that overdose deaths from opioids increased by 22.7 in states that passed medical cannabis laws. It was a completely unexpected outcome and obviously very unintended. And I do want to point out that this is a very different, this current data is a very different finding than the data that was collected prior to 2010. Because that data actually showed that marijuana legalization and marijuana medicinal use actually lowered opioid overdoses. But when another study was conducted between 2010 and 2017, they found that the original analysis did not continue to hold over a longer period of time and that state medical cannabis laws and opioid overdose mortality actually reversed from minus 21% to positive 23%, which is a 44% increase of the relationship between legalization and opioid use. And this, this increase remained even when they adjusted for recreational cannabis laws. So I just wanted to share that when marijuana is legalized, we sometimes have unintended effects. And one of the ones Chairman Serna, you asked earlier, where youth get marijuana, are they getting it from dispensaries? And while Joelle answered correctly, we don't have data on that. But what we are hearing is regardless of where youth are getting it, what we do know from findings is that when marijuana is legal and available and it's accepted as a, among the community, youth use skyrockets. It goes way up even though it's not legally supposed to be available to youth. It has to do with what Sheri mentioned earlier about perception of risk. So I just wanted to share those along with my colleagues. And again, my agency, Omni Youth Programs, is fully available at any time to provide more information or answer any questions you may have down the road. And I thank you very much for this time.
Great, thank you, Cynthia, for calling in. Appreciate the work you and your organization do on our community. Okay, next one.
Next caller. Hi, caller. Please start with your comments. You have three minutes.
Thank you. My name is Patricia Sturdivant. I am Chair of the Local Advocacy and Education Committee of the National Council of Jewish Women Sacramento Section and a constituent of Supervisor Kennedy. We have 400 members in Sacramento, including constituents of every member of the Board of Supervisors. Combating homelessness is one of the primary goals for NCJW for this year. So it is very troubling to see inaction or ineffectual responses to the humanitarian crisis we witness daily in our city and county. So far, from articles I've read in The Bee, it seems as though the Board of Supervisors has approved two small projects housing 52 individuals. That is underwhelming. I probably passed 52 homeless individuals this morning on my way to Trader Joe's for grocery shopping. So your constituents need and expect bolder action to address this serious problem. This proposal offers that possibility. I urge you to support the resolution and leave this important issue to the voters to decide. Thank you.
Thank you, Patricia. Okay, next caller.
Next caller. Hi, caller. Please start with your comments. You have three minutes.
Now?
Yes, you can start now.
Okay, okay. Hello, my name is Susan Rosenberg. I am calling as a resident of District 2 and as a member of the Sacramento Section of NCJW National Council of Jewish Women Advocacy and Education Committee. We're involved in advocating, educating, and helping to provide services for children, women, and families. And obviously homelessness is, it has been and continues to be a serious concern and issue for us. We support the staff recommendation to, that the board adopt the resolution calling for an election to present to the voters of the county proposed ordinance, which would establish a special tax on cannabis. As clear from listening to the meeting, it's a complicated and complex issue. And it is our position that by having this go through the electoral process, it will be an opportunity for the community to engage with the issue and hopefully work together to overcome, to help to overcome this serious, complex problem that we all need to work together on. It's very clear to anyone driving down the street, going to the parkway, we definitely need services and money is needed. And it's very encouraging to see this brought forth as a possible way to be another step in working towards resolution of this issue. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Susan, for your comments.
Okay, thank you.
And that's the last caller.
Okay, that's the last caller. Don't have, did anyone arrive after I had taken the comments from in chambers? I don't see anybody else signed up, so that will conclude our testimony. And then I'll bring it back to the board. And Supervisor Serna's punched in. Supervisor Desmond to follow.
Great, thank you, Mr. Chair. First, let me start by thanking all the speakers. I know there have been a great many perspectives shared today. And I think they're all valid and inform our decision. And I think that, as was mentioned by a few of us, we hope that you stay engaged because should this be placed on the ballot and we have something to talk further about at a later date, we certainly could use your advocacy, whether it's from the standpoint of youth welfare and health, mental health, addiction services, understanding the latest data points relative to risks and benefit when it comes to cannabis use. I think all of that is fair game, so to speak, in terms of giving this board something serious to think about as we might continue the conversation with, of course, the public very much engaged. So I appreciate the time and effort that you've taken to be here and your patience as well. And that goes for those that participated telephonically as well. Again, I won't take too much time to overstate what I've already mentioned, but I do think that this measure, the way it's been crafted, could bode well for this county and for some of its most vulnerable people that today are-- and for some of its most vulnerable people that today are camping on the edge of the rivers, that are sleeping in their overpasses, that are in the alcoves of local businesses, feeling like their only opportunity is to live outdoors and be very susceptible to adverse impacts on their health, mental health, and who oftentimes unfortunately self-medicate. So will this cure homelessness? Absolutely not. I'll be the first to admit that. This is going to be, if it's passed and implemented the way I envision it, and perhaps others on this board. The way I envision it is being additive tool in our toolbox to do what's expected of us. And believe me, we hear about the need to stay focused and redouble our efforts on the subject of how best to address the needs of those that are unsheltered, not on a daily, but on an hourly basis. It is the number one issue that is at the forefront of every single day. I guarantee you, all five of us deal with it every single day. And so in quickly trying to think through how this could be reconceived as a special tax, that's why I suggested that we immediately gravitate towards the objective of adding resources for what I believe is, you know, should be our number one priority here at the county. So I know that there are others in the queue, and I see, just for your sake, Mr. Chair, Mr. Kennedy's hand is up.
Let's leave it.
All right, very good. I do see others in the queue, but I would, at this point, like to make a motion to adopt the resolution and place the measure language on the November 22 ballot as presented.
Kennedy, a second.
Okay, so we have a motion in a second. This is the first reading. Does this require coming back to us? So this, today's action would not, we move it forward for that consideration next week, is that correct?
Today's action would be the final action related to the ballot measure, because you will be approving the resolution. However, related to the ordinance, it's the first reading. We will come back at the special meeting on next Monday and adopt the ordinance.
Okay. All right. So that's the motion. Yeah, okay. All right. So I do have others in the queue. Supervisor Desmond, Supervisor Frost, and Supervisor Kennedy, all in the queue, so.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. And thank you, Mr. Serna. You know, I think we see a lot of these issues very similarly. This is, and thank you, everybody who spoke today. I mean, really means a lot to me that you took the time to be here. It's very important for us to hear from you. And we're all very concerned about the well-being of our community, well-being of youth in our community. And this is a big change. And I join a lot of people in trepidation about this kind of change. But I do believe that the approach that we're considering today is the right approach. I think that, I hope, and I assume you will all be involved, and what I assume if this does succeed would be a very robust engagement process with the public, with advocates, with community-based organizations about what kind of regulatory scheme we would establish. Of course, that's a premature discussion for today. But I do think we can, as I referenced earlier, learn from past mistakes and really do something that is kind of state-of-the-art. And Kim, I liked what you said. I mean, I love the idea of maybe Sacramento County doing something that our state legislature can learn from, right? And adopt some things at the state level. Because a lot of these problems that you bring up, especially with, I think, THC levels and access for youth, I mean, there are always changes that need to be made at the state level as well. I'm not naive to think that we can solve those problems, certainly at the local level. So we need to continue that advocacy there as well. But again, appreciate you and appreciate Supervisor Serna for bringing this back as a special tax. I agree. I think this issue, to put, to underscore what Supervisor Serna said, yes, homelessness is far and away the biggest issue all of us probably face from the first time, from when we wake up in the morning till we go to bed at night, and in my case, in the middle of the night, almost every night as well. And the fact that we are, this board's making the decision to dedicate the tax revenue for that purpose, I think really demonstrates that we understand the exigency of this crisis that we're facing. And it won't be a panacea, but I think it will, it will help us provide the services for those in need in our community. So, thank you. And I plan to support this today.
Okay. Supervisor Desmond. All right, Supervisor Frost.
Well, this is difficult for me. On one hand, we had our Public Health who came and gave us a very robust report on the impacts on public health. And our Public Safety came, and they clearly stated that recreational cannabis is a bad thing for our community. And I also want to thank the Alcohol and Drug Advisory Board, who presented a very informative letter to us with some data points. And those of you who spoke out today for the information you brought forward, it helped, it helped me understand more clearly the impacts that we're potentially bringing to our neighborhoods. And I also really appreciate those who came to talk about the health benefits of cannabis. And I think that's what is so hard for me, because I'm learning about those health benefits of cannabis, and I have, I appreciate that. Ultimately, today, we're just voting on whether or not we want to put this before the voters. And the last time we spoke, I remember Supervisor Serna had mentioned bringing this back as a special tax that only the unincorporated would vote on, and the revenue would be dedicated to the unincorporated county and the American River Parkway, which is the jewel of our region. I'm in agreement with that. The problem is that neither of those two things really are before us today. It's going to be voted on by the entire county, and it's kind of hard to just allocate to the unincorporated county when it comes to homelessness. I'm not sure that can happen. Over the past month, I've had community meetings, and I've reached out to my constituents, which I spoke about before. And there were a lot of discussions, a lot of different opinions on both sides of that argument, or whatever you want to call it, issue. But the most common thing was that those who live in the unincorporated county felt like it's not really fair that 2/3 of the county is voting about what's going to happen, what's going to happen in our communities in the unincorporated county. And I'm not sure I think it's fair, you know. I don't think it's fair for the unincorporated residents to vote, you know, on an issue that, you know, for the whole county to vote on an issue that really has a, could potentially have a dramatic impact on our community. And we already have a drug problem. So I heard today how marijuana can potentiate the opioid issue. I'm also concerned about the fact that the proposal doesn't specify that funds should be only spent in the unincorporated homelessness. I already covered that. I think at the end of the day, I am not sure bringing recreational cannabis to the unincorporated county is worth the money. I'm not sure how many lives that'll impact and how it will impact an already hugely exacerbated problem of homelessness. And for those reasons, I'm not going to support the proposal. I would urge this board to consider going back to the legislature to fix this problem that exists, where cities can vote on a special tax or a measure that only impacts their city, and yet the unincorporated county doesn't have that same right. I think we should work on that. So I guess, in conclusion, I'm not going to support today. It looks like it's already going to pass, but I won't be supporting it. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, Supervisor Frost. Supervisor Kennedy?
Thank you, Chair. First of all, I just want to say that I completely disagree with the notion that funds such as these should be allocated just to the unincorporated area. First of all, as it stands today, the majority of these funds would actually come from the incorporated area of the county. Incorporated of the county is 2/3 the population of Sacramento County. And whereas our municipal services, excuse me, where our municipal services, you know, the priority goes to unincorporated, obviously, because that's, you know, who services the unincorporated area. We have made a commitment very publicly, and I don't think that there's been any dissidence within the board to disagree with the fact that we are committed to supporting all seven cities and the unincorporated area in an equal fashion when it comes to supporting our homeless population with mental health services and drug and alcohol programs. So to, you know, wall these funds off just for unincorporated goes completely against the commitment that we have made to our countywide community. Secondly, and I'll repeat some of what I said last time we discussed this, and thank you Supervisor Serna for coming up with, I think, an elegant solution and from the dais. The, you know, what we're talking about is, you know, we always talk about the fact that homelessness is a crisis. Homelessness is an emergency, and then we treat it like another government program. This, to me, shows that we are thinking outside the proverbial box and providing services. And sure, it's not the panacea, it's not going to solve homelessness. But we cannot leave any stone unturned to look for resources to deal with what is truly a humanitarian, urgent crisis. And I think it was, you know, I credit Supervisor Serna for, you know, coming up with the idea to dedicate these resources to that effort. So I will be supporting this with those comments in mind. Thank you very much.
Good. Thank you, Supervisor Kennedy. Okay, we did have one other caller that I understand that was in the queue, but we had not gotten to. So we'll take those comments, and then I'll make a few comments, and then we'll go to a...
When we close that queue, they're sometimes in the shuffle there.
That's fine. We want to be sure to hear from them. So we do have a motion in a second, and we heard from all of us.
Thank you. Jillian, can you transfer that caller, please?
Hi, caller. Please start with your comments. You have three minutes.
Thank you. Hi, Board Supervisors, everyone. My name's Jimmy. I'm been a successful cannabis operator in city Sacramento for the last four years. You know, I've worked with, we currently work with close to 700 retailers throughout California. I just wanted to say, you know, one, I'm in full support of putting this measure on the ballot. I think, I'd like to challenge potentially some of the comments today. Being a distributor, we test good data California with the compliant labs, everything from flour to edibles to cards. And some of the claims say on the averages, I think, potentially could be, could be, you know, potentially skewed. And, you know, just you do a quick search on weed maps, you know, looking at where a lot of these deliveries, you know, are placing pins. They're in Antelope, they're in Citrus Heights, they're in Carmichael. And again, I work with every single retailer and delivery company in Sacramento, and I talk to them on the daily. And it's not a matter of allowing more cannabis in those counties. The cannabis is already there. So I think what this measure does is just allow, you know, us to truly put it towards a crisis that matters, and that's homelessness. And I'm from Antelope, I grew up in Antelope. I'm lucky enough to be successful in this industry. Again, the last four years, there's been some trials and tribulations. But, you know, going to visit my mom and having to second-guess, you know, stepping out of the car, what I left in my car, you know, for the crisis, I think, you know, just want to point out that it's not a matter of, and I completely want to thank everyone for their comments today, and especially those around kids and their concerns. But the cannabis is there, whether you're getting it from the black market or delivery companies, most of it's already funneling in. So I think what this does is allow us to better regulate it and have more eyes on it, and allow the dollars to go back towards something that I think can make a huge impact on the city. So apologize about calling in late, but as I started your comments today, I just, I wanted to make my comment known.
Great. Well, thank you, Jimmy. No apologies. Again, we were glad to get you in for your comments, and thank you for calling in today. Okay.
Thank you.
You bet. Any other callers?
That's it.
Okay. All right. We do have a motion in a second. I just wanted to speak briefly to the item before us, and certainly join with my colleagues in thanking all those who have weighed in now over the course of several hearings with different topical areas, but all related to this, this before us today, as it relates to whether or not to potentially go to the voters with a proposal for taxing cannabis in the unincorporated area of the county. I know I spoke to it the last time, and again, I won't be repetitive. Firstly, I'd like to certainly compliment, though, my colleague for his creativity and leadership on the issue, even on policy matters where we may disagree from time to time. I think certainly Supervisor Serna and as all my colleagues, I know are thoughtful in their deliberations, but certainly in their comments. And I'm very appreciative of that. And again, I think, you know, reflect the diversity of opinion in our community, and certainly on this matter and other matters. I will say that last time, obviously, did not support going forward under the previous proposal, and cited some of the concerns, one being that, as I even asked a question earlier today, that under state law, we have to submit this to the entirety of the county, the countywide vote for what would be, in this case, the imposition of a tax, should the board, and should the electorate choose that. And then secondly, if there are programs that actually was taxable. I think that obviously still remains the same. But there is another part of it that, again, I certainly recognize that, that the voter threshold, because of the special tax and because of dedication of the revenues under the proposal, would actually go to address funding for homeless programs throughout the county, that the voter threshold, though, is a 2/3. So that goes, you know, in some ways towards at least broadening the question in a way that requires a higher voter threshold than was before us previously. But I would just note that I still, again, recognizing that this would go before the voters in November, and then a policy framework would follow behind that, and that the board could choose at a future date to pick from the menu of what might or might not be regulated and taxed. And I get the point about what's already occurring with regards to deliveries, but it also opens the door to cultivation and to processing in the county, and potentially, obviously, for dispensary sales and other commercial activities. And that'll be for a future board to decide. As I noted earlier, in at least the last hearing, that obviously that's something the board could decide to regulate and permit currently, but there would be no tax associated with it. But certainly, having listened to the commentary today, I think reflected on the changes, and as well as, I think, you know, the, what's embodied here. Again, I don't object necessarily to going to the voters, but I do feel pretty strongly, as I've thought about it, in something that Mr. Serna nor any member of this board controls as relates to going directly to the unincorporated population to get their distinct take on what's being proposed versus going countywide, which, again, reflects, I'm sure, a more diverse opinion. I'm not going to support the measure going forward today. Thank you. Okay, we do have a motion in a second. And if there's no further comments from the board, please call a roll, Madam Clerk.
Yes. Supervisor Serna?
Aye.
Kennedy?
Aye.
Desmond?
Aye.
Frost?
No.
And Natoli?
No.
And the motion carries. Let the record reflect that Supervisors Frost and Natoli recorded a no vote.
Okay. And then, so with the action just taken, we will be back next Monday with the ordinance, is that correct?
Yes, for final adoption of the ordinance.
But the matter now goes forward to the ballot. That's been decided here for this vote.
Correct.
Okay. So you will see the measure as, and there wasn't a resolution that followed on, so folks may have seen a previous version of the ballot language, but that was revised as of yesterday, was that correct?
Yes, as of last night.
Okay. So for those that are in the audience that have been watching, there was some revised language and statement. I know there was some clarification regarding how that language would appear on the ballot. But what's in the resolution that was just approved by the board, that is the language that will appear on the ballot on November the 8th.
Correct. Correct.
Okay, very good. Okay. All right, so that goes forward to the ballot, and we'll be back in this chambers. Do we have a time for next Monday, Flo? This item?
Oh, Monday, I think you guys are coming back at 9:30.
Yes. Okay, so 9:30 next Monday for the actual ordinance, but the measure is going to the ballot in November.
Okay.
All right, very good. Thank you all.
Okay. Item 63 is your own rank's appointment to the Area 4 Agency on Aging Governing Board. Currently, Member Serna sits as the member, the vacant seat is alternate, and this is a one-year term.
Okay. Phil?
Yeah, thank you. I would like to appoint Julie Bates as my alternate.
Okay. Do we need a motion on that, or is that just confirmed?
Yeah, I'll go ahead and take them.
Okay, I second it.
I'll move the appointment of Julie Bates as my alternate.
Second it.
Serna?
Aye.
Kennedy?
Aye.
Desmond?
Aye.
Frost?
Aye.
Natoli?
Aye.
Unanimous vote.
And many thanks to Maxine Kugman, I believe was your appointee for many years.
For many years. She's very, very capable and was very good about sharing her thoughts with my chief and I on a regular basis, and really want to publicly thank her for her service.
Thanks, Phil. Yes, I concur. Okay. All right, now we go to item 64, which is our nominations.
Good afternoon. You're continuing to August 23rd, the Sacramento County U. Commission, and then continuing to September 7th, Building Board of Appeals, Carmichael Old Foothill Farms Community Planning Advisory Council, Cordova Community Planning Advisory Council, County Service Area 4B, Slough House Wilton, Kasoomas, County Service Area 4C, Delta, Elk Grove Kasoomas Cemetery District, In-Home Supportive Services Advisory Committee, Local Childcare Planning and Development Council, North Highlands Foothill Farms Community Planning Advisory Council, Orangeville Community Planning Advisory Council, Realinda Alberta Community Planning Advisory Council, Sacramento County Commission on the Status of Women and Girls, Sheriff's Outreach Community Advisory Board, South Sacramento Area Community Planning Advisory Council, Southeast Area Community Planning Advisory Council, and the Vineyard Area Community Plan, Community Planning Advisory Council. For today's items, Adult and Aging Commission?
Okay, with Chief Staff recommending nomination of Kristen Staus, and continue remainder to August 9th.
Okay. Cemetery Advisory Commission?
For District 1, please continue to September 7th.
Okay.
District 5 nominate William Tubbs.
Okay. Thank you. Children's Coalition?
Okay, Chief Staff recommend nominating Joshua Pollak, and continue the remainder to September the 7th.
Okay.
Do we, that's a long time off, is it, a month and a half?
Seems like it, but it's not really, it's going to be here before we know it. Civil Service Commission?
Please nominate Stephen Booth.
Thank you. Development Disabilities Planning and Advisory Council?
Chief Staff recommend continuing this August 9th, there's a pending interview.
Okay, thank you. Equal Employment Opportunity Advisory Committee?
Chief Staff recommend likewise, continue this August 9th, there are pending interviews.
Okay. Fair Oaks Community Planning Advisory Council?
Please continue to August 23rd.
Human Services Coordinating Council?
Okay, we have four citizen member representatives and, or excuse me, two, two citizen member representatives. Is that correct?
Yes.
Okay. Let me get to the right page here. I would nominate Liz Blum.
Okay.
There's one other applicant, I don't know.
Okay.
All right, we'll hold, so there's still another vacancy, so, well, we, obviously two vacancies, but there's still room for another nomination as well.
And you want to contender, continue the remainder to August 9th, or further?
I think August 9th.
August 9th, okay. Thank you. Public Health Advisory Board?
Okay, Chief Staff recommend continue this to August the 9th, pending interview.
Sacramento County Employees Retirement Board?
Okay, so we took, we only have one vacancy based upon the action we took earlier today to fill one of the seats. So we have the incumbent, and as well as one applicant that's been interviewed by the Chiefs of Staff, so is there a...
Yeah, I know that Rick Fowler's been a pretty stalwart member for a number of years, and I think many of us know him and his daily job capacity, and I would support the appointment of Rick Fowler.
Okay, nomination or appointment?
Uh, nomination.
Okay, so we nominate Rick Fowler?
Okay.
All right. If there's other nominations, then that'll come back to us.
Sacramento County Mental Health Board?
District 4.
That would be continued to August 23, please.
Thank you. And there's one public interest representative, but you're not, are we just continuing, Mr. Natoli?
Public interest?
To 23rd?
Fundamental, fundamental health board, is it wide open?
Uh...
Or is it my, is it my? District 5, you're saying?
It says one public interest representative.
From District 5?
Doesn't say, it's not district-specific.
Well, there...
But in my notes, it does say continued to August 23rd, so...
Okay, that must be District 4, because we all, there are three seats that are, and then one Board Supervisor seat, but three seats for each of the districts under the waiting list, so, okay.
Thank you, sorry.
No, okay.
Sacramento County Treasury Oversight Committee?
District 1, we would like to reappoint Joseph Wilson.
Okay.
Okay, that's for the oversight? I had said there was no applicants, but did Mr. Wilson apply?
I have my notes. Treasury Oversight Committee?
Yeah.
Yes.
Okay, good. All right.
Okay. And I have a note for District 5 to continue to September 7th on that one.
Oh, then it's no applicant, so there's, for District 5, the notes weren't clear here, okay.
My notes show District 2 as well.
That's, that's what was my understanding.
You're correct. District 2, I have notes for August 9th.
Okay. District 2?
Yes.
Well, let me just say this, if, if, if Mr. Parker, who's the current incumbent, has his application in, I would nominate him, otherwise we'll continue.
Do you know, I don't know whether Mr. Parker has the application?
I do not have a na, I do not have a name on the, on the notes that I have, it just says no applicants.
Okay, then, then I will continue to August, what is that, 9th, you said?
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, thanks, Patrick. Okay, so we got nomination, Mr. Wilson, hold D2 to August 9th, hold D5 to September 7th.
I got that, thank you. Sacramento Environmental Commission?
Okay, Chief Staff recommend continue that to August 9th, pending the interview.
Okay. And that concludes your nominations.
All right, very good. Thank you, Madam Clerk. So now we go, item 65, been waiting all day for County Executive Comments.
Yes, and I actually have comments today. I would like to just take a few moments to acknowledge Doug Sloan, the, he's not here, but he's the Director of Waste Management and Recycling, and he is retiring on August 3rd. And I just want to acknowledge him for his many years of service. He began his career with Sacramento County in 2010 with the department, and he promoted to Director in March of 2017. Before working for the county, he had a long and distinguished career in the private sector related to waste management, and he has a distinguished career. He's led the department in implementing and improving programs to support the ever-changing world of waste management and recycling while focusing on outstanding customer service, keeping costs the lowest in the region, building an outstanding team of dedicated staff, ensuring a positive team culture, and providing training and development programs to ensure appreciation of all staff. He's also led the effort to implement SB 1383, which is hard for a lot of folks, but I think he's done that really well. I have absolutely enjoyed, in my tenure in this position, working with Mr. Sloan, and I just want to thank him for his service and wish him well in retirement.
Thank you, Ann. I have several supervisors punched in, too, so they may want to speak to this as well. You, still your comments, Taylor? Oh, okay. All right, then I'll go to board members that are in the queue, Supervisor Frost, Supervisor Desmond, Supervisor Serna, and I'm watching for Patrick's hand, so. There it is, all right. Okay, four for four, there we go.
I just want to quickly congratulate Supervisor Natoli. We were at the stand, the Sacramento Stand Down celebrated their 30th year anniversary. They started in July 1992, and there were 600 veterans that showed up to their very first stand down, and we were there to help them celebrate their anniversary, and they gave, they honored Supervisor Natoli with a very prestigious, huge gavel, colorful gavel, and, and so that was fun to celebrate the veterans. And I also want, wanted to just briefly mention, in the past couple weeks, some friends from another county in Southern California reached out to me with a request for information about our child abuse prevention and protective services oversight and child death review. And so I referred them to Michelle Gaejos, who also referred them to Sheila Boxley to provide some information, but in the whole process, I found out that Sacramento County is considered the model in the state for working with the child death review, and that we have significant systems in place, and people look up to us, and it was a friend from Riverside County that called me and said, can your, can I, can I reach into your staff and can they help us? And so I just wanted to acknowledge and congratulate Michelle Gaejos and the, and the staff for their excellent work, and, and thank them for helping other counties, so...
Thank you, Sue. Okay, Supervisor Desmond?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I want to comment on Doug Sloan, and I hope he's listening, and I just want to underscore what, Ann, what you said about Doug, and it's probably a tough thing to end your career on overseeing a very large rate increase, and we, this board really put him through the wringer over the past year or so, but I, I very much enjoyed getting to know Doug, and I know he worked very hard to implement those changes in state law here locally, and certainly appreciate his efforts and really wish him Godspeed in retirement. And the other thing, I just want to comment also on, you know, on this board, we, like a very difficult conversation today on, on this cannabis measure, and a lot of very difficult discussions we have up here, but I just want to say, I very much appreciate the, I think, the level of, of respect and collegiality among members of this board. It's really an honor and a privilege for me to be here, and there's, you know, there's so much chatter these days in, in the county about the county's role, the county's obligations, and, and dealing with some of these extremely challenging and complex social issues. Of course, the top of the list being homelessness, but I'm very proud of the work that this, that this board has done and continues to do. Obviously, a lot more work to do, but I think we've done some really, really terrific things. Certainly, you did a heck of a lot more before, before I got here, but, and that's also doing no small part to your leadership, Ann, so I know we'll continue to do this, we'll continue to meet the challenge, and continue to make sure we get the message out here about the good work we're doing. Thank you.
Thanks, Rachel. Okay, Supervisor Serna?
Thank you, Ms. Chair. So just a few things, so I, too, will join my colleagues in congratulating Mr. Sloan on his much-deserved retirement, and thank him for his years of service, and as has been mentioned, his ability to shepherd this board's way through some fairly challenging new state mandates, I think has been fairly extraordinary. I did want to weigh in on a couple items, the first of which dovetails nicely off of, I think, what Supervisor Desmond said eloquently about, about, you know, acknowledging what this county, its administration, its political leadership is doing, and how it's prioritizing the business of governance for all of our residents, whether they live in the cities or in the unincorporated county. I know, we know, that our, our executive is putting some of the finishing touches on a, kind of a new robust communication plan to help us really reach a new day in terms of letting the public know what we are doing. I think sometimes we get so entrenched in the most, you know, emergent needs that instead of tooting our own horn, or paying too much attention to simply messaging because we're actually working on problems, we're working on challenges, we're trying to find creative ways to do what we were elected to do, or in the case of the administration, do what they're appointed to do, that it has been unfortunately left by the wayside much too often. But I'm confident that with Ann's leadership, whether it's in document form, or video form, or, or other means of communicating what this county is achieving for its citizenry and, and in all aspects of county service delivery and governance, I, I think that's long overdue, and I'm glad she's made that, made that a top priority. I have suggested that once that, kind of that new campaign is polished and ready to see the light of day, that perhaps we have a timed matter around it, and, and actually have our various department heads when it comes to subjects such as homelessness, which is arguably the most complicated thing that we deal with, and have a very public, open session rollout of, of, of kind of what might be contained in document form, and also make use of the fact that in these chambers, we might actually have maybe a unique video perspective that's deployed to capture what's said at the podium, so that that could be used in a different medium to help get the message across about what Sacramento County does for its residents. And then lastly, I know that there are a number of board members that are well aware of this incident that occurred recently along Jackson Highway, Highway 16, near Rancho Marietta, and I know our staff is on this, but I did commit to my constituent who, who does live in District 1, that I would raise this, and then you'll recall that we actually started this morning with receiving and, in writing, written commentary about an unfortunate experience along that highway where a stray golf ball made its way gladly not through a windshield, but enough to do some fairly significant damage to the windshield, luckily. Fortunately, no one was injured, but it has, I'm glad to see that it has precipitated some, some thought around what we can do to, and perhaps should be doing, to make sure that this is not a repeated incident, because I do think it's extremely dangerous, as infrequent as a golf ball strike like this might be, especially you, Mr. Natoli, you know how fast the vehicles travel on that, that stretch of highway, and you can imagine a golf ball coming straight at you is no laughing matter. So again, I look for some options for, for all of us to consider in terms of what might be done to, to enhance safety along that quarter. Thank you.
On that, I wonder if I can follow up on that note. Dave DeFanti did some follow-up on that, I don't know if you would want to comment on it.
Can we, can we, should we get to in-depth?
I, oh, yeah, I mean, that depends on what your comment is, but I, it is not an agendized item, as you know, so... Okay, well, we did do some follow-up, so maybe, Dave, you can follow up with Supervisor Serna afterwards.
Okay, all right.
Thank you.
Very good. All right, Supervisor Kennedy?
Thank you, Chair. I just want to give a big shout-out to Flo and her staff for making it possible for me to attend this meeting today. I know it's difficult to do, and I also want to thank my colleagues, because having sat there when we have to do this, it, it can be discombobulating to have someone on the phone, and particularly for the chair, and, and you did a great job, Mr. Chair.
I gotta do better on the voice recognition, though, I kind of missed out this morning, so...
Well, you, you, you got the whole hand thing up, though. But, but, yeah, so I just want to say thank you for your patience, I appreciate it, I would have been there if I could, but my children are now wearing a shirt that says my dad went to Texas and all he brought back was COVID-19.
Get better soon.
Yeah, that's right, hope you get the film well, quickly. Okay, I just had a couple of different items, if I could, real quickly. One being, just to, again, echo what's been said here already, and that is to thank Doug Sloan for his service, certainly with this county, obviously his longtime work in the private sector...
county. Obviously, his longtime work in the private sector, but for better part of 12 years, we've had him as a... In our solid waste and recycling division or department, and he's done a good job. He's a gentleman. He certainly comes at it with a can-do attitude. And as Supervisor Desmond said early in his comments, that when the first time the proposed rate increase came to us, it certainly was untimely, as those things can be. But I know, working with Ann, once she assumed the leadership role, and certainly with this board, that we were able to get to a point where we, you know, retain the fiscal solvency of the department, but also then talked about implementation of what was noted here relative to the organics, recycling, and the changeover. But again, kudos to Doug for his good work, his service to the people of this county, and to the many ratepayers, I'm sure, and customers he heard from even in recent weeks. But he's done a good job of leading that department, and I want to wish him well, and, you know, good health, many blessings in his retirement. But also, just to piggyback on the event last Friday with Stand Down Sacramento, that organization for 30 years has done outreach to homeless veterans in this community, and I know for a number of years was out at Camp Pollock with their activities, and then more recently has been at Mather, and through pandemics and through a bit of thick and thin, have continued to serve thousands and thousands of homeless veterans and their families, and largely in all volunteer effort. But they've done some tremendously good work, and it was a real honor to be amongst them and to, you know, have them share some of their work from very humble beginnings, even though it was 600 veterans on the first stand-down. But the work they've continued to do in this community, and again, certainly want to applaud them and all of their leadership, and certainly the work that's been a difference in the lives of a lot of folks here in Sacramento community over the years. I wanted to just make two notes, one being, we can't all but have seen the ads for the very soon-to-open casino in the city of Elk Grove. But what comes to mind is that there were memorands of agreement with both the city and the county, and there... I don't know what the triggers are for that, but there are, in order to offset costs of services, I think it was roads, law enforcement, and human services, drug and alcohol, I believe, or maybe alcohol. But at any rate, if we can track that, make sure that we're accounting for those dollars once they begin to flow in, and I just... That law that occurred before you, you know, became our county executive. But it's important, and there will be annual revenues for flows counted have to be accounted for in those particular categories, I think, so.
Yes, we will make sure to pay very close attention to that, and I was actually involved with a meeting right when, you know, way back when, so.
Okay. So, but there is an agreement, again, that was worked out with the tribe, and certainly, I'm sure they'll stand good for their portion. We just need to make sure we account for it on our side. And then, lastly, I see Natasha in the audience as well, but it's imminent that the latest draft EIR on the most current proposal for convenience of water through the Delta via tunnel will be released. And I guess, one of the things that I want to be sure, and again, I'm confident that we're already on top of it, that Ann, from your office all the way down to the organization, that we're prepared to comment on that document thoroughly. Obviously, Natasha works both in this county but with the Delta County Coalition, but it's... It requires extensive work. I know Lisa, you and your office, certainly Bill Burke and others have been involved, you know, but it involves multiple departments. We've submitted comments previously. We'll need to, you know, dust those off, make sure that they're, you know, refreshed and current, and then anything else that we want to... And at some point in time, it requires coming to this board for additional commentary. I think it's appropriate. There'll be a window of time, I trust, 90, 120 days from the release. But it's going to be a very voluminous document, and I just... I want to be sure that we don't stay right on target, because I know it's additive, obviously, what our staff has called upon to do. And again, Natasha certainly has headed up a good portion of that effort, but it does... It will call upon us to, you know, take the time and effort to be very, very thorough in our commentary. So, that's all I had. So do we have any other items, any other announcements? We have no adjournments in memory of today. And so with that, we have... The meeting for tomorrow is canceled, so no meeting on 27th. The next time we're back in chambers is next Monday at 9:30, August 1st, for the second reading of the inaction on the ordinance that was introduced here today. So until then, we'll see you next Monday.